All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. It is November 24th, and I will call to order the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. We do not have any Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference requests. At this point, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that moves us to item four, changes to the order of the agenda. Any changes from staff this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anything from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will move on to item five, report from closed session from the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a report from closed session tonight. The council deliberated about the appointment of an interim city manager and made a decision in closed session tonight. The council voted unanimously to appoint Nile Blackburn as the interim city manager effective January 17, 2026.
Congratulations, Nile. Excited to see you in this new role. Okay, that moves us on to item six, council communications and announcements. These are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. Do any of my council colleagues have an announcement this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Please note that each speaker is limited to two minutes. It is the council's general policy to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. So if you're here joining us in person, please fill out a speaker slip and give it to our city clerk. If you're joining us online, now is the time to raise your hand. We will close the raise hand feature in just a moment. So please raise your hand now if you are on Zoom, but we will start with our first public comment in person. Crystal?
We do have one slip at this moment from Michael Stafford.
Good evening, everybody. Michael Stafford, been a resident of San Carlos since, gosh, 93. And I've spoken here before about this very issue, and that is the decline in the number of available tennis courts that are here in San Carlos. We had Arguelo back then available for the public use. It seems now that it's been designated to the school, and with that, it's being utilized by the tennis facility, tennis lessons and whatnot. So it's been effectively taken off the ability for the public to be able to participate in utilization of those courts. We've seen courts at Highlands that have been changed over to pickleball courts, which is fine, but again, it's more courts that have effectively been relegated to other use cases. We've had a 20%, maybe even more so increase in population in that time. Do the math. It doesn't add up, and for the city of good living to be able to have these types of amenities, it seems like we're going in the wrong direction, and I don't know if there's been any real true effort to be able to counter that. I know there was some talk about up on Crestview, putting some courts there, and also the discussion about taking over the current courts over at Burton Park for other facility uses. But it just seems like this is an issue that's just not changed and has not gotten the attention of your predecessors, and I want to bring that back up as a point of view from longtime resident. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We actually just worked on our Parks Master Plan recently, and maybe our staff, Amy Newby, you could reach out to Mr. Stafford with some more information. If your email is on that card, we'll reach back out to you. Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any, actually, at this time, why don't we close the raise hand feature? I think that's been open long enough. Do we have any additional public speakers in person?
I don't have any other slips, and I don't see any movement out there, so I think we're okay in person, and there are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, great. Then that concludes public comment. We will now move to item eight, the consent calendar, and I will pull item K, so looking for a motion to approve items A through J.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Consent Calendar items A through J.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Layton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move to the public hearing. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the addendum to the City of San Carlos 2045 General Plan Reset Environmental Impact Report, adopting a resolution amending the San Carlos General Plan Land Use Map, Land Use Element and Circulation and Scenic Highways Element, introducing an ordinance amending the San Carlos Zoning Map and Municipal Code Title 18 Zoning Ordinance to codify the downtown specific plan, and introducing an ordinance adopting the downtown San Carlos Downtown Specific Plan. With us tonight, leading us off, is Lisa Porres. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lisa Porres, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department's Advanced Planning Division and Project Lead for the Downtown Planning Initiative. So on behalf of the project team, we are very excited to celebrate this milestone and to present the San Carlos Downtown Specific Plan for the council's considerations. And because I'm going to be speaking for hopefully just 20 minutes, are you getting feedback, a little bit of feedback? Has this been happening? Okay, all right. I hope you can still hear me, and hopefully that'll go away soon. So this evening, I'm joined by other city staff representing the core team for this project, and that includes Al Savay and Rendell Bustas. On the consultant side, joining me in person includes Jim Stickley, urban designer and landscape architect, principal with WRT, Mark Spencer, traffic engineer, president and senior principal with W Trans, Brian Canepa, principal planner with W Trans, and attending virtually on the consultant side, we have David Shiver, who is a principal with BAE Urban Economics, and Carly Kaufman, Sequa Project Manager with Rincon. I would also like to acknowledge several city staff members in attendance tonight, whose expertise and guidance were instrumental in developing the specific plan. This includes Andrea Marticich, our Assistant Community Development Director, Andrew Douglas, our Senior Management Analyst for the Community Development Department, Sojudy Hawk, Economic Development and Housing Manager, Rucha Dande, Principal Planner, current planning division, Adolfo Orellas, Economic Development Coordinator, Kristi Wu, Associate Planner with the Advanced Planning Division, Akanksha Chopra, Sustainability Senior Management Analyst, Janice Chung, our Fire Marshal, and Grace Lee, our City Engineer. So this three-year story began in 2021, when the city council established its strategic goal to create a long-range plan for the downtown of San Carlos, a plan that reflects our community's needs today and anticipates the needs of the community in the future. So since 2022, we have worked closely with the community and a council-appointed advisory committee, held study sessions, workshops, open houses, met with stakeholders, distributed flyers, conducted online surveys, and analyzed existing conditions and trade-offs. Along the way, we received endorsements of key concepts, adopted the Streetscape Master Plan earlier this year, and on November 3rd, just a few weeks ago, received a recommendation from the Planning and Transportation Commission to adopt the downtown specific plan. And now tonight, we are pleased to present the San Carlos Downtown Specific Plan for the council's consideration. So recognizing the strong community interest in the future of downtown, I'd like to provide a little bit of context. So the focus of tonight's meeting is, of course, the downtown specific plan, the policy document. But there are also two major initiatives that have been accomplished and/or are underway. This includes the downtown Streetscape Master Plan, which was adopted in April this year, which addresses everything in the public right-of-way, our public realm, streetscape improvements, new plazas, et cetera. And our first implementation project, our improvements to Harrington Park. And earlier or midway through this year, the council approved the design, recently approved the construction drawings, and that project will commence in spring 2026. And the reason why I'm bringing all this up is because our community is very interested in all three, and a lot of the public comments that we're receiving, even on the specific plan, kind of hit on, touch on all three. So I wanted to mention the context and the focus of tonight's meeting. So getting into the agenda, we're going to provide the council with a summary of the Planning and Transportation Commission's recommendation. I will be giving a brief overview of the specific plan. That'll be followed by a Q and A session with the city council, followed by public input. Then we'll go back to city council discussion, and the evening or this item will conclude with either action or direction by the city council. So to adopt the downtown specific plan, the council would consider adopting a resolution approving the addendum to the 2045 General Plan Reset Environmental Impact Report. The council will consider adopting a resolution amending the San Carlos General Plan's land use map, the land use element, and the circulation and scenic highways element. The council would also consider introducing an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and municipal code, which is Title 18 specifically, the zoning ordinance, to codify the downtown specific plan. And then finally, the fourth action would be to consider introducing an ordinance to adopt the downtown specific plan. So what is the downtown specific plan? It is essentially our long-term roadmap for how downtown will grow and improve over the next 20 years. It acts as our North Star, guiding directions by laying out goals, policies, and action steps for the city to follow. The plan also sets the standards that private development and public projects, like street improvements and new plazas, must follow to make sure everything fits together in a consistent, well-designed and coordinated way. And while it provides stable direction, the plan can be updated in the future as conditions change or new priorities emerge. The downtown specific plan covers an area approximately 67 acres, bounded by Holly Street to the north, Greenwood Avenue to the south, along Laurel Street south of Arroyo, and then El Camino Real serving as its eastern boundary. At every step of development, both the specific plan and Streetscape Master Plan reflect the insights, priorities, and feedback of our community. It has been informed by an integrated and diversified strategy to gather input from a wide range of stakeholders, the 18-member advisory committee, and through in-person and virtual discussions held over multiple workshops, open houses, meetings, and through online surveys. So three weeks ago, on November 3rd, as I mentioned previously, the Planning and Transportation Commission recommended to adopt the specific plan. And while doing so, the commission had suggested 10 recommendations, and these are fully described in Attachment 9, which is packet pages 738 to 747, and staff has provided responses to these, which is also in Attachment 9, should the council agree to the commission's proposed amendments. So moving on to the specific plan contents, we know that the council is already very familiar with the downtown specific plan and its broader vision and priorities. Tonight, however, we'd like to share an overview of the plan and highlight the chapters and their key policy directives. So thank you for the opportunity to walk you through it. So we're going to skip right ahead to Chapter 3, Land Use and Urban Design. We want to clarify that there are no proposed changes to land use designations or their distribution. All existing land use designations and their associated intensities and densities and height remain unchanged, as do the current zoning designations. The only exception under consideration is a potential density change for one parcel. In addition, the plan includes minor adjustments to land use provisions. And these land use provisions are reflected in Table 3.2, titled Land Use Regulations in Chapter 3. And the minor amendments address several different use classifications. Those include residential on the ground floor specifically, community assembly, less than 3,500 square feet, which is a use that would allow, for example, community centers, instructional services such as personal growth, development, music, martial arts, and so forth. Is another use we looked at, pet stores, government offices such as public contact offices, cultural institutions relating to performing arcs for theater, music dance events, and then finally automobile vehicle sales and leasing. And each of these have their existing land use provisions noted here on this chart according to their zoning classification. And what staff is recommending is to open up some of these uses, which were previously not allowed in the downtown core, and look at considering these uses, but with a conditional use permit. There is one use which we are recommending removing, and that is automobile vehicle sales and leasing, which is currently allowed, and the plan proposes not allowing that. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, the only parcel where there is a change or proposed change to a land use and zoning designation is the SAM Trans site at 1250 San Carlos Avenue. So with SAM Trans relocating to the city of Melbrey, an opportunity emerged to consider increasing the allowable density. SAM Trans, as the council has received, submitted a letter requesting not to increase the density of the site, and instead to simply maintain it at its current land use and zoning designation. However, on November 3rd, the planning and commission's recommendation did include keeping it at its proposed higher density. So moving on to development standards that we'd like to highlight for Chapter 3, this includes a modification to standards for the 600, 700, and 800 blocks, but a minor modification. The plan includes a change to the height of ground floor uses. Currently, the code requires 12 feet minimum, and the downtown specific plan proposes to increase this by a few feet to a minimum of 14 and a maximum of 16. No other changes are proposed. For the 1200 block of San Carlos Avenue, what this section is showing here is the proposed land use and zoning change for the SAM Trans site, which is shown on the left side of the diagram, which, if approved, would allow up to six stories and 75 feet in overall building height. And on this massing, a step back would be required at the fifth story, just like we saw for the 600 and 800 blocks. The same change to ground floor height is also proposed. And on the right-hand side of the diagram, the only change would be to allow all four stories to align. Currently, the code requires the uppermost story, the fourth story, to step back a total of 10 feet. And for this particular segment, we're looking to really kind of punctuate the public realm with having a four-story massing on both sides, and only on one side would the building be allowed to go higher, which is a SAM Trans site, and at the fifth story, that would be required to be stepped back. Other code changes include amendments consistent with the objective design standards for mixed-use developments, which were recently adopted by the city council. So moving on to policies for the land use chapter. So for this chapter, the focus is on strengthening ground floor activity throughout the downtown, especially along the key blocks of Laurel Street, San Carlos Avenue, and El Camino Real. The plan supports high-performing retail and food and beverage uses that keep the area lively throughout the day and into the evening. In addition, the plan encourages mixed-use development that brings more activity and provides inviting, human-scale public spaces. And to help maintain a healthy mix of businesses, the plan proposes to take a closer look at the city's Formula Business Ordinance to determine whether adjustments could better support vibrancy and economic stability. So before I dive into the details of this slide here, I want to flag a concept that is not yet part of the specific plan, but that we know is of particular interest to the council as a result from your November 13 study session. So we wanted to address this with the council as a priority item for tonight, and to hear your guidance on next steps and whether it might be incorporated in the specific plan moving forward. So this is provided in your packet as Attachment 10, packet pages 748 to 751. So what this would do is what we're proposing to do is add a policy statement to elevate the council's goal to preserving long, excuse me, ground floor commercial uses. We would also add a policy specifically to find a way to incentivize ground floor retail and commercial services. There would be an accom- services. There would be an accompanying action to consider creating a ground floor activation overlay zone. And then finally, as part of the specific plan, should the council want to go forward with an idea like this, is that we would incorporate further or additional land use regulations that would really clearly signal the council's priority of preserving ground floor commercial uses. And those regulations that would provide that clear signal would include a framework to essentially restrict residential uses on the ground floor in key locations. So these restrictions would apply to certain blocks, intersections, corners, and gateway nodes as shown here on this diagram. And such diagram would be also incorporated into the plan. So where ground floor, commercial, retail office, restaurant, and service uses would be required as primary, would be required at, would be at primary and secondary gateway nodes. And these nodes are where the plan's vibrancy and activation innovations are intended with an abundance of foot traffic. In these key areas, the plan could make it abundantly clear about the city's priority for ground floor commercial uses. So as you see here on the diagram, there is a legend in the lower left-hand corner which indicates a dark solid line identifying where ground floor commercial uses would be required. In the areas with the red dashed line, this would be signaling that the ground floor spaces would be required to be constructed and designed to allow for future conversion to commercial uses in the future, meaning they may not be required today, but we want the spaces designed so that future conversion is relatively feasible. And then in the areas with the yellow dashed line, these would be areas where certainly commercials are allowed, but not the highest priority areas within the downtown context. So another way to look at this is everywhere you see, where you see the solid red line is where ground floor commercial uses would be required and really promoted through incentives that would be established in a future gateway overlay, excuse me, a, a ground floor activation overlay zone, for example. And we can talk about this further. So moving on to that, from that to Chapter 4, Chapter 4 is prosperity and economic development. And the plan's overall approach to downtown economic development is about creating more active, welcoming, and an inclusive of environments. The plan focuses on activating the downtown core through strategic zoning, a strong mix of land uses, and placemaking efforts that support entrepreneurship, arts and culture, and equitable access for everyone. The plan also focuses on making it easier for businesses to start, operate, and grow. That means clearer communication, more proactive support, and a business-friendly approach that strengthens the downtown's economic vitality. And at the same time, the plan would work to build a distinct vibrant identity for downtown, develop a coordinated branding and marketing strategy paired with community events, cultural programming, and public gatherings that will help reinforce downtown as the destination for residents, visitors, and businesses. So the plan commits to creating this space with implementing a cohesive wayfinding system to help people move through the downtown and strengthen its overall brand. And finally, this chapter encourages small business innovation through designated spaces for pop-up vendors such as the new 600, the plaza on the 600 block, and our new closed block of, the 700 block of Laurel Street. This also would address necessary infrastructure like electrical outlets to eliminate the need for gas generators. It would also include a clear process for reviewing and approving any pop-ups to ensure quality and compatibility. For Chapter 5, this is really about creating a balanced network for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users. The plan priorities prioritizes a pedestrian-first downtown, safe visible bicycle infrastructure, public transit connectivity, and evaluating long-term vehicular modifications to really support the vibrant, safe, and pedestrian-oriented downtown that we striving for. For Chapter 6, which is parking and transportation demand management, the plan sets forth a policy framework that places priority on managing parking as a shared and coordinated system. Some of the key policies include requiring unbundled parking, but as noted by previous council direction, that would be applied to only, that would be applied to market rate units only. So moving on to Chapter 7, the public realm. So this chapter presents a comprehensive approach to strengthen downtown as the heart of the city by implementing the downtown streetscape master plan as funding allows. The policies focus on creating a clear, connected streetscape that links the downtown core with the civic center, helping both areas support and energize one another. The plan also focuses on expanding and improving downtown's public plazas like the Centennial Plaza on the 700 block and the new plaza on the 600 block, as well as Harrington Park to create those inviting, vibrant gathering spaces for the community. So a key component of Chapter 7 includes the locations for outdoor dining and retail. So what we want to make very clear in term what the plan is proposing is, is regulations that essentially almost double the standard that is in the current code. Not the standard of the parklet, but the outdoor dining standard that's in our current code. So this is based off of key locations throughout the downtown. For example, the 600 and 800 blocks of Laurel Street would have an outdoor dining zone consisting of eight feet. The 700 block would have an outdoor dining zone consisting of nine feet from the building face. And the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue both would have eight feet outdoor dining space from the building face. And along El Camino Real, the minimum that we are setting forth is at least five feet, but in all instances on El Camino Real and elsewhere, there would need to be at least a four-foot clear path for pedestrians. As part of the plan's offerings for outdoor dining and retail space, there is up to additional five feet that may be allowed in a tree strip zone on a case-by-case basis. So as part of outdoor dining retail display locations, I would also like to flag that a member of the restaurant community has submitted multiple comments calling for, for staff to look at the potential for additional outdoor dining space. And staff is prepared to follow up on this and provide more detail to the council, should the council want to explore this conversation further during the Q and A session. So I want to move on to outdoor dining operation and maintenance. We've had a lot of questions from the community along the way about what is allowed, what's not allowed, all the different elements that would go into an outdoor dining zone. And I want to say that a lot of the standards that we have today in our code remain, but there's a couple of things that we want to offer through this specific plan that would actually change the regulations that we have today. And one of that has to do with bringing in portable appurtenances in at the end of each day. So this would allow certain components to be stored overnight that the businesses don't have to bring them inside each and every single night. The other outdoor dining provision that would be included in the plan would be not to allow outdoor dining areas to be subleased to other businesses. So this is a change from what we currently have today, but other things like no trash storage, you know, open flames, no amplified or live entertainment, all of that would, would remain the same. In terms of design standards, I have three slides, so I'll go through these pretty quick. But a lot of the standards stay the same and require furniture to be commercial-grade and durable, no plastic chairs, et cetera. We want to clarify that, you know, barriers are not required, but if a operator would like to install a barrier, those would need to be a maximum of four feet in height. And like the council discussed at a previous study session, there's no specific height requirement for a planter versus a plan. It's just both elements together would need to be set at a, at a limit of four feet in overall height. And we want to really make it clear that no platforms or coverings would be allowed. So additional standards would make it very clear that no permanent attachment or shelters would be allowed. There is some language in the code, but we want to make that a little bit more clear. And then with respect to awnings and umbrellas, there are some slight modifications to allow awnings to be solid or patterned, and, but that umbrella should be a solid color. And considering you drawing from the city of San Carlos's color palette, but maintaining the current requirement that no generic advertising or signage is permitted on the awnings and umbrellas in the outdoor dining spaces and retail spaces as well. We also are including a new provision that would allow retractable wind screens, retractable curtains on the sides in order to provide some basic shelter components. That is a standard that's not currently in our code, and we wanted to bring that forward as part of the downtown specific plan's standards. As I mentioned before, the tree strip for outdoor dining would be an additional area that restaurants could operate in on a case-by-case basis, depending if there's room, that there's no bike rack, or fire hydrant, or other city elements that would prevent the placement of a table or chairs. So this is an additional offering. But when this provision would be, I guess, implemented, if a restaurant operator could take advantage of that, we want to make sure that standards are really emphasizing maintaining clear access and safety around the tree strip zone. So that'll include standards relating to pedestrian buffers between adjacent seating zones, staying certain feet distances away from utilities like manholes and access panels, and maintaining required setbacks from fire hydrants and fire department connections, and having some clearance zone for passengers at the curb, vehicle passengers at the curb. So these are, would be the provisions. Specifically, we also want to mention that portable heaters aren't really anticipated for this small area in the five-foot tree strip zone. We don't want the heaters next to the trees, and we don't want any electrical cords or lighting to be strung from the building all the way out to the tree strip zone. So moving on to standards for retail display areas, a lot of these are the same, same provisions for the umbrellas and awnings. The one change that we're making specifically for retail display areas that previously in the code, it was limited to a certain amount of area in front of the storefront, 25% of the width of the frontage of the associated business, for example. And so we're removing that entirely because we want to bring outdoor retail zones on par with what's offered for outdoor dining. And again, here are no platforms, no coverings, and no mannequins or outdoor display figures. So Chapter 8 reflects the chapter all about public art. And the intent here is to really develop a cohesive public art vision that blends the city's heritage, drawing from our local talent, looking at the possibility of incorporating landmark installations to really enrich the downtown streetscape, the alleys, the plazas, and really drawing on our existing public arts master plan to create these art opportunities. Chapter 9 refers to sustainability and resiliency, and the plan is promoting a climate resilient and sustainable downtown, one that incorporates energy efficiency, green building practices, sustainable mobility, and clean energy transportation are some of the key policies that you'll find within this particular chapter. Oops. What happened? Let's see.
We didn't see Chapter 9 like that one, yeah.
So let me go back to Chapter 9. Let's see. Yes, so let me repeat Chapter 9. So this chapter promotes a climate resilient and sustainable downtown by integrating green infrastructure such as rain gardens, permeable tree strips, and green roofs, reducing runoff and improving water quality. It encourages energy efficiency, green building practices, sustainable mobility, and clean energy transportation are some of the key features in this chapter. So we're almost to the end, Chapter 10 and Chapter 11. So Chapter 10 is, focuses on infrastructure and utilities. So building a future-ready downtown through upgraded utilities, sustainable water and waste systems, seamless agency coordination, equitable services, and enhanced digital connectivity are the key themes contained within this particular chapter to really ensure that we create a modern, resilient, and sustainable downtown by upgrading these key utilities within the downtown. And the last chapter, Chapter 11, focuses on administration and implementation. So the council is aware of, with, because of the downtown streetscape master plan, there are 13 different segments that are proposed, but clearly the precise sequency of these phases will ultimately be decided by the council and based upon future funding availability. But throughout this particular chapter, it gets into a little bit more detail on that, and it offers some additional policies, including what the city should do during implementation, which is really focusing on minimizing disruptions and ensuring continuing access for the community. This will require proactive information, communication, and on future collaboration with downtown businesses and the broader community throughout construction. So there are some additional policies that really dictate how the city is going to go about this process and really hold ourselves to that communication and collaboration with the community in the future as these different segments get completed over time and of course, subject to funding availability. So now this concludes our presentation, and we're excited to open up the floor to your questions and have a productive discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so for my colleagues to consider, the way the planning commission went... Oh, did you have one more thing to add, Lisa?
No, I just, we had a, something come up with Zoom, so we just want to double-check the technical capabilities and make sure they're, they're operating on Zoom.
Okay. Can I pose a question to my colleagues while we wait for the Zoom update? So the way the planning commission went through the specific plan was they took it two chapters at a time with questions. So we would start with questions on chapters one and two, then three and four, five and six, trying to organize thoughts so we're not jumping all over the place with this big document. But if anyone has a different idea, I am open to that as well. Not sure how many questions everyone has.
I have a lot of questions, and I'm happy to go per your suggestion.
Okay. Did you want to chime in, John?
Sure, I'm fine with that. You'll be surprised, I don't have that many questions after all the subcommittee and study sessions we've had, but I look forward to the discussion.
Okay, three years of work. Here we are. Yeah, or more. Okay, so we, is the Zoom issue worked out, Crystal, or we, do we need to take a break? Okay, great. Okay, so everyone's online. All right. So we will start with questions on chapters one and two. If that, is that all right with you, Lisa, if we do it the way the planning commission did? Okay. Questions on chapters one and two. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Lisa, for all the work and staff. This has been a long process. And I want to first thank you for this, for the, listening to us on our study sessions and doing the formula businesses and things like that on the ground floor. So thank you for that. Can you just explain the SAM Trans request to us, indeed? Is that one and two?
Certainly. So there was a letter that SAM Trans provided before we went to the Planning and Transportation Commission on November 3rd. And since that time, there has been a second letter submitted to the city council, and it's included in tonight's packet. So during, as I mentioned during the presentation, SAM Trans is requesting to simply maintain the site's current land use designation and zoning designation. And they will speak tonight. I'm sure they're going to be speaking up, giving a public comment on this element. And so I don't want to speak for them, and they have the rationale for why they prefer to keep it as the way it is today. And if the council wants to go that direction, staff doesn't have any objection to that.
Thank you. Just, I'll just ask a few questions, then pass it on. Chapter one and two, the non-residential developments, can you just explain the shared private parking spaces? Is that chapter one and two, correct?
Is it later?
That's chapter six.
Okay, I'll save my question, then.
Brian will be ready.
Anything else, Vice Mayor, on 1 and 2?
Do we catch the Walnut Street error, the 15 feet? The 50 feet, sorry?
The 50 feet, yes, correct. That is included in the corrections.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on Chapters 1 or 2?
Is Attachment 10, is that 2? Or did that come in somewhere else? Was that 4?
Attachment 10 would play into Chapter 3. So just for the councils, I know you've looked at this, but Chapter 1 is really the introduction, setting the context. Chapter 2 includes the vision and the guiding principles. It goes into all of the community engagement. So if there's any questions on those, we'd be happy to take those.
Okay, I don't see any, so we could move on to Chapter 3, John, if you wanted to move into your question.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, quite a process. Really appreciate the overview of that and this, you know, yeah, three-year effort and dozens of meetings, but appreciate the flexibility of the process as well. And yeah, I really appreciate these Attachment 10 additions to our thinking. I think that, you know, the work we did in that strategic retreat a couple weeks ago to really identify some pretty deep concerns about threats that our commercial vibrancy faces. So very happy that this will be formally reflected in the plan, and I know it's a bit of a late add, but I view it as a high priority. Do we know, like, what is your sense on these topics, how this will relate into our strategic planning work plans in the next year or two?
It's my understanding, based upon the study session on November 13th, that one of the strategic items the council may wish to place as a strategic item would be developing an overlay zone for El Camino Real, coming up with a package of different incentives that would really promote and essentially incentivize those ground floor commercial uses that council really wants to see at key locations. So what Attachment 10 is doing is really identifying the specific geographies. It's a signal, like, these are the areas where we really want to see ground floor commercial. There may be other areas, because of state law, where we may not be able to really push for those or absolutely require those. So we're signaling where it matters most. So that's the idea behind the diagram contained in Attachment 10.
Got it. So this basically sets us up to work on this strategically even next year if we choose to look at that overlay district.
That's our understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Leighton.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions in regards to... So what I struggle with with this document is it's, we're at kind of, it feels like you're at like 30,000 feet with a lot of, we promised to look at things in the future. And to piggyback off of what John said, that's kind of what we've had a little bit discussions about with the overlay zone and the kind of the commercial hubs. I guess my, just my first general question is, are there any, would we be doing work twice necessarily, or paying bills twice by not having those answers now when we approve the document? Like, would we have to redo any CEQA things? Would we have to find more issues? Do you recommend we have those answers first, or does it matter?
I think with the things that we're thinking about for incentives, wouldn't really be changes to standards. They wouldn't consist of changes to density, for example, or raising the height, or doing anything like that. It could be, I think we had some ideas presented on November 13th, such as maybe reducing or waiving certain types of fees. These are things that we would really be thinking about and following council's direction at its, based upon what you decide at your future strategic retreat, but I don't believe that that work would require any kind of undoings of the downtown specific plan. This is something that could be done in-house.
Okay. And I get, along those same lines, then, as we look at kind of the economic development side for Chapter 4 of it, I know, you know, we talked about things like the Business Improvement District. I guess my question is, if those are the strategies we place six months from now on staff, are we essentially putting a plan out there that the business district may say, hey, I don't agree with things like the way we're doing heaters, or I don't agree with the way we're doing awnings? What problems, if any, do you foresee if that's the feedback we get, and then having to roll that back out of the plan?
Well, that would be dependent upon council direction. If the standards aren't working, if the businesses can't operate in a way that seems reasonable, that's something that we would want to take a look at, and that's something, kind of gets back to what I said at the beginning, although it's a 20-year plan, it is open to amendments. So if certain things aren't working, and we may want to go back and adjust certain things, we certainly can do that, and that would be based upon council direction to do so.
Okay. And are there any things that you would, sorry, this is going to be very open-ended, so I don't know if you will answer, Lisa, is, are there any concerns you can see that you would flag for us now, that like, if we approved and had you come back five years from now and start to backpedal on them, that you'd be like, well, that'd be a major change to the plan, right? Whether that's either any sort of capital improvement project, anything like that?
Well, that's kind of a broad question, so I'm sort of going through my mind, thinking what that could be. I would say that probably the biggest impacts that are going to occur, and maybe Jim may want to offer more, but are really related to the streetscape improvements. Now, we have a streetscape master plan that gives us really good direction about what we want to see in the public right of way, the sidewalk width, but as we know, when we start working on those technical construction drawings, we have to work with engineers, utility providers, certain things can shift. And when that happens, like, just, that's, if the council said, for whatever reason, we need to go back and look at the design, or we're not sure about this shift, I think those are the most impactful components of the plan, in terms of implementing the streetscape master plan and the specific plan. But in terms of the policies, the guidance, the standards, those are less onerous, if you will, if there's something, a standard that's not working, and we want to change it, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Councilmember Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. The first question, just, I know you clarified, I just want to clarify on Laurel, sort of on the, near the RS District, that height piece that was 75, that's, will be corrected, back to 50?
100% confirmed.
Okay. So, and then my next question related to that is, let me just find the right page here, sorry. On 5, 511 of the overall document, I think it's 63 of the, it shows on, between Laurel, on Laurel between Arroyo and Morris, it lists PD 1. Do we have a planned development on the west side of Laurel there? Because there's a bunch of different processes, there's single-family houses there, there's other things.
Yes, this is an old PD. Right now, maybe I can ask my colleagues to remind me if anyone knows what that PD 1 is, but this would be on the, this is the 900 block of Laurel Street, right, between Arroyo and...
Correct.
Yeah. I'm not sure what that development is, but all of the planned developments that were previously approved in the plan...
Isn't that 939 Laurel? There's a, there's a mixed-use building there. It's in the middle of the block.
Because there's a bunch of like, single-family houses, there's other, like, there's a whole, there's maybe like eight or 10, there's a doctor's, dentist's building, there's a whole bunch of buildings on there, but yet, it shows the whole block as PD 1. So I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Oh, yes, let me make that clarification. PD 1 is sort of the lighter...
No, it's just that one, just that one building in there.
Correct.
Okay. And the rest, the rest is the MUN 40 for that, and would hold to the 50 feet, and the setbacks on that. And we decide on the setbacks, we agreed to 20, 20 feet on the rear setback, is that right? Is where we are right now?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Rec.
On the rear setback for those, we decided 20 feet was where we ended up on that? With the changes?
That's right. Rucha's nodding yes.
And then a 6-foot, 6-foot setback for the third story? And if there's a fourth story, is that straight up, or is there more setback for that?
So, good evening, councilmembers, my name is Rucha. Where we landed at with the objective design standards for MUN districts that back up to residential, RS 6 districts, was 20 feet setback, and at the 20 feet, the height limit was 28 feet, and from there onwards, it was 6 feet step back, with the third and fourth story being able to align.
And if there's a fifth story?
I don't think a fifth story is allowed. The height limit is 50 feet.
Even with the density bonus, it would not be permitted above 50 feet?
No, with density bonus, you know, we would have to allow it, but the step back would not be in place. It would align.
Could we add an extra setback, step back on that, if they do go to the fifth story?
At this point, we wouldn't know what a development would propose at that time, so what, the code, how it is written, is for the existing standards, which is at 50 feet. So the standards are designed for the existing code. So we wouldn't know whether a developer would require, would propose a sixth story or a seventh story at that location.
I'm assuming they couldn't get this, I mean, there's only so much density that they can take from a bonus, that, right, I mean, they can't likely double the height on things. But, I mean, there are other places where we, like, on the, what do we have on the, I think, on the downtown core, isn't there something similar where you, there's setbacks on that that are similar? And I think somewhere I read says it's the fifth story is, you know, there's another setback? If there is a fifth story, so can we just do a generic within this downtown specific plan? Anytime there's a fifth story, there's an additional setback in place? And just cover, try to do it as a catch-all, so we're not getting stuck on that?
Yeah, there are certain locations where those building step backs are strategically located in the downtown core, along San Carlos Avenue, along Laurel Street, so that those upper stories are pushed away. But in places like El Camino Real, all the stories can align. So I think that would be inconsistent with what the odds, did you look at El Camino Real? I don't...
No. It's the same.
I'm less concerned about El Camino Real, I'm more concerned about sort of Laurel, when you're backing up to residential, and we're, you know, we're potentially having, you know, 60, 70-foot buildings now that are just going to be straight up in the air because we didn't plan for it.
Yeah, so this would be the rear setback that Rucha was just referring to.
Having more setback on there.
If, just to clarify your request, if you're mentioning that...
Like a step-back story, not a step-back, step-back.
Yeah, just for, let's say, for instance, if an application comes in for a six-story or seven-story building within an MUN 40 district, there is no current requirement for a six-feet step back, but what you're suggesting is include a catch-all statement that in case a density bonus project comes in, which requests more than four stories or five stories, in the MUN 40 district, six-feet step back shall be required?
So I guess, and I wonder if we can do it even more, that's a good point, Rucha, I wonder if we can say in there, if at any point, there is a density, a request for density bonus that exceeds the height limit within the downtown specific plan, we require an additional step back. So it could be if someone's at 75 feet, and that, so once you hit that max, there's an additional step back. Could we limit it to Laurel Street and do that? And say on Laurel Street, that's the case? Or I'd say I would rather put an extra setback in on the fourth floor for MU 40.
I think that could be done, but it's most likely that the applicant would request for a density bonus or a concession or waiver, because...
Then they can take that waiver instead of the extra height.
But can't they take unlimited waivers?
Yeah, there's... But only to a certain percentage. They can't, they can't just build whatever they want. There are certain percentages based on how much affordability they have in the project.
There's multiple different laws at work, so that, the density bonus law has, has the chart that you're talking about, but, but the other laws, like SB 35 and SB 79, and the more recent laws that came about after that, talk about the waiver and concession concept, so, and it's tied to the financial viability of the development. So we, I think that's what Rucha is talking about, when we don't know whether there, someone with a, with a project that's asking for more height is going to say that, well, we can't, it's not feasible if we have that setback, is the hypothetical, I think.
So can we, but if we're saying that, that's only if they're taking the density bonus, I'm wondering if we can just say, let's, so back to your original point on the MU 40, if we just said, if you're exceeding the height limit of the MU 40, we require an additional step back?
And I think you could, you could do that.
Yeah.
It's just that we're, we don't know if we'll be able to, when a developer comes in, we don't know if it's forcible, but that sets the, that sets the baseline, is I think what you're trying to do.
Right, and then they could change it, but at least they know that if they're over the height limit, then, and they decide to take the density bonus with height, that there's that, we have that in place.
Yeah, there would be only two situations under which the height could be exceeded. One is under the density bonus law, concessions and waivers, and I don't think there is any other situation, because we wouldn't allow it if it, they wouldn't, if it's not a concession or a waiver. So I think a statement could be made, but again, I would leave some legal advice on that.
I mean, I would, it's something I guess we can have to decide now, but I would propose that for the, backing up to the RS units, side. Are we, and then on the awning piece, is that this part of the, that's, I thought, later on? I know Neil mentioned that, but I just want to...
Chapter 7.
I'll wait till, I'll wait till that for then. I think that's all I had for Chapter...
We can take 3 and 4 right now.
Okay, 3 and 4. I mean, I'm, I know, Lisa, you mentioned something about, you know, expanded dining. I'm certainly interested in, you know, staff having a discussion on that. I guess on the ground floor commercial, can you just clarify? You mentioned with the map you have on page 19 of the presentation, so I know we talked about trying to incentivize, and can you just remind me, so if we do the overlay, is this related to that, that we could require, although we can't really require ground floor residential, ground called commercial, given the new state laws? But you have the word "required" in here. So I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
Yeah, I'll let the city attorney respond to that, but the way that we have posed the language is really using the word "restricted." So we're basically saying that residential on the ground floor, there's limitations to that. We want, we really want to restrict that in key locations, because we're signaling that in these key locations, we really want to see ground floor commercial uses. So in the diagram here, required means, these are the areas, and maybe there's a different word that maybe our city attorney might suggest, but these are the areas where we're really promoting and trying to incentivize ground floor commercial uses. Maybe Al wants to say something, too. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As we discussed at our meeting a week or so ago, the intent here is to say what the city wants, and that's what we're doing here. So we believe that, from a zoning perspective, you can say it in this, in this instant. You can say that you're restricting housing on the ground floor. Now, there would be a caveat in this document, or in the zoning, that says, notwithstanding whatever state laws there are about that. So you wouldn't, you know, that would be the caveat, according to our city attorney. So with all this, the way we set forth these ideas is, again, to signal to the marketplace, signal to the developers what you want, and we think that it's reasonable to do that.
Yeah, we have a statement in the, in what you're approving tonight that talks about, there's not an intention by the city to override state law, and, but we are setting the, trying to set the strongest baseline that we can, based upon the direction the council's given us. But it, because of state law, we're going to have to take those on a case-by-case basis to see if someone comes in with a project. We don't think that these nodes that are on the page right here reduce the... We don't think that these nodes that are on the page right here reduce the density of the, of the general area and the zoning district. So we're trying to do a delicate balance here and, and create a strong message as the, the planning staff is talking about that commercial is very important to San Carlos on the ground floor. And, and then when a project comes in, we'll just have to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. I have, I have two quick questions if that's okay on this section since we're going, is that?
Sure.
All right, I'll try to be super fast on that, sorry. On the PED six for the, just can you just clarify, Lisa, for the 600 block plaza, when you say pop-ups, we're, we've discussed in having place sort of more permanent structures that might be occupied in it sort of temporarily versus, you know, someone setting a tent up or something. It's intended that we would have those structures that have electrical in there and they could be food places, retail, other things to support the activities in that area.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my quick one. And then just, so I understand, my understanding is, given all the discussions we had, we can't really change any of the zoning or heights on areas. So, but I know we're looking at upzoning the Samtrans Building. Does that give us any flexibility in the specific plan if we wanted to lower the height on, or put, do further setbacks on, in the downtown core? I guess that may be for Greg.
We'd have to quantify that, that effect somehow. But I, I think the principle under SB 330 is that you would need to do that at the same meeting. So if you weren't going to reduce, if you, if you, right now, the current zoning on, on 1250 is 100 units per acre, right?
That's right.
So we're, the action you're taking is to upzone that. And so that might allow you to downzone other areas. We just have to, but we'd have to quantify that. I don't, because we can't reduce the overall density.
But we know, but we know what the, what it is for the Samtrans Building, right? What that would potentially bring for, what the upzoning, in terms of units at least.
That's correct. It's in the staff report. I just have to find the number.
So potentially, we could either, either change setback on the 600, 700 block and 800 block or reduce the height on those blocks.
The net increase, if there were to be a zone change, is only 34 units. So we would really have to go through an exercise to quantify where we could take away 34 units in key locations should the council direct us to do so. But we wouldn't, we haven't done that analysis as part of this plan.
That's all I have for, but that would allow us to either do height or setbacks potentially, right? As part of that, is that accurate?
It's, it would be, it's based on density.
So whatever the density would be, so we could, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll let staff confer here. This is a complicated request, Councilmember Rack.
It's a request I've had for about three years, so.
It's requiring a lot of on-the-spot math. Okay, we'll move to Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And could we go to slide 13? And I will just state that, yeah, we do live in a world where state law is trying to preempt us and they're trying to usurp our planning authority. And I wholeheartedly agree with our community development director that we need to state what it is we intend in our own planning. And so I absolutely support restricted for uses that we don't want on our first floor. We should be clear like that. We should be unambiguous with the marketplace on what we want. I also propose we remove all references to us, you know, asterisk, maybe state law does this or that. We're not talking about state law tonight. We're talking about San Carlos zoning. And I don't want to be signaling to everyone, hey, go look up state law and figure out how to step all over us. So I don't want caveats in this. I want us to state what it is we want in our zoning. And then when these various frankly over-aggressive state laws like SB 79, which frankly I don't think can stand, get overturned, we still have the code that we want. So I don't want to be anticipating anything about state law. I don't even want to mention state law. So I do submit a proposal right here that I want any, you know, lay-down wiggle room BS language about state law removed from this thing. I want this to be San Carlos zoning stating what our community wants. So that's what I have to say about that. The, on this slide, and I was a little thrown in the packet with all these red pen and ink changes. Can I just get an understanding and history of what's going on here? It just felt to me like we're really late in the game to be getting kind of red line, pen and ink in, in, in the plan like this.
Yeah, we apologize. This was an oversight, just a human error. As we go through the, the plan, you know, this, the specific plan that you have in your hands, the one that we released on October 14th, when that was done, we noticed that there were certain errors. So what that attachment is indicating, just by way of a red pen, is indicating what those corrections would be.
Okay.
So that's another layer we wanted to draw your attention to and sorry about that.
No, I appreciate that. And I mostly just wanted to understand where it came from. So this wasn't Planning Commission input or anything like that. This was staff, I mean, this very complicated exercise, many pages, you know, completely understandable. And I'm glad you guys are rereading all this towards the end, so thank you for that. And that's what this was, was just staff noticing inconsistencies and cleaning it up.
Correct.
Okay, good. Wanted to verify that. Great, that's all I have on this section. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thanks, John. I have noted your requested amendment. I'm keeping a list, so thank you. I will just chime in. I appreciated also, just to add my two cents, I appreciated also in the map that we're requiring the two blocks of San Carlos Avenue to be commercial on the ground floor as well and not just El Camino and Laurel. So thank you for adding that. And then in chapter four, there's talk about establishing a business liaison role. And I'm just wondering for the benefit of the public, could you, could you talk a little bit about that action item, please?
Thank you for the question. So currently, we have our Economic Development and Housing Division and we have two individuals working in that, in that division. So Judy Hawk, our Economic Development. And Housing Manager is really our liaison to the business community along with Adolfo Ruiz, who is the Economic Development Coordinator. And they both work together and they, they go downtown, they meet with businesses, they do grassroots work in the, in our downtown community and elsewhere in the business community. So the intent would be to formalize the current role that they have on staff and let the community know through this document what we intend to do in the future and to let people know, we, even though we already do this, we want to formalize the role. And it could be that the role expands to other individuals within City Hall or people that we bring on. Yeah.
Great, thank you. I agree. I think it's nice to have one, one person on staff. We do that with our childcare policy as well, so that's helpful for the business community. Okay, I think that does it for chapters three and four. We can go to five and six. Chapter five is mobility. Chapter six is parking and TDM. Councilmember Rack.
Thought I turned it on. For the parking and mobility, I guess I want to get clarification because I saw in their list, it says, you know, we will eliminate all bundled parking and includes commercial. My understanding was AB 2097 only applies to housing.
I'm just going to have Brian address this.
Because I also don't, and I also, we talked about the, anything from the TOC because my understanding is that is, I, I don't want to include anything on the parking minimums from the TOC or park, maximums and anything like that.
No, this has nothing about parking maximums.
Good.
Totally separate. In fact, that whole conversation is going to get bumped to next year because MTC is-
Yes, exactly. I'm glad we didn't do anything on that.
Yeah, no, we're never waiting on that until we actually get confirmation from MTC. So this has to do with the unbundled parking. Is that correct?
Correct. And it says, I, I get for the residential, but it says, in the document, it says, "commercial leases as well." And minors, I thought that 2097 only applied to housing, not to commercial.
2097 doesn't pertain to unbundled parking. So 2097 has to do with the elimination of minimum parking requirements mostly.
Right.
So I, I guess, I feel like we're, we're talking about two different issues.
Yeah, so I guess I'm trying to understand why we would sort of unbundle a requirement for commercial parking because I feel like we're now opening up the door for, you know, those commercial buildings to just park anywhere on the street and, and then now we're taking a parking that would impact businesses there downtown.
So you're right. So unbundling commercial parking tends to be less common than unbundled residential parking. Now oftentimes, and you can unbundle commercial parking in one of two ways. If I am someone who's coming in to lease space in a building and you say you're going to unbundle parking, that could mean that I buy, I lease my space separate from the parking that I'm getting in the building itself. Some communities around the Bay Area already, already do this. The reality is if you're in an office or some use like that, you're very likely going to take the parking anyways. Now, the other, the other thing you could do in terms of unbundling is you could unbundle it from the employees. That's a little bit less common. So I'm a, I'm a business owner and you're saying I have to unbundle the price, the parking from my employees. I have to offer it as a separate benefit. There's a long-winded explanation of why, saying, it's not something we have to keep in the plan. The residential bundling is much more critical than non-residential bundling.
Right.
And so if the, if it's the council's direction to drop it, we certainly can do that.
I mean, I, I think we should look at the commercial separately and, because I, I'm just concerned that if we're going to sort of unbundle from a lease, that we run the risk of just having people parking all over the place downtown versus, I get on the residential, I think that makes, that's obviously, that makes sense. It's part of AB 2097 with no minimums and whatever it is, it's going to be. So I would propose that. And then the second one is, I didn't, I would also just ask that we do, we should do, and maybe we're going to do this separately, just a parking, a separate parking study in terms of not necessarily increasing parking, but how we address the parking challenges we have with regard to looking at things like zoned parking, changing the time limits, how we push more employee parking programs as part of this because I think that is a huge impact on downtown.
So there is a whole appendix, I think it's appendix.
I did not, I missed that part of it then.
Appendix B.
I was going to look at appendix B then.
Yeah, I believe if I'm getting the appendix correct, but it's about a 100-page document. That's a downtown parking management plan and it does contain many of those elements.
B.
Yeah, it's a real page-turner. Yeah.
Yes, I didn't see it in here. I see the endum, but, oh, I think I missed the link is what happened because I was looking through it and didn't see the link. Okay, I will go look through all that then. That's fine.
I guess just to, just to clarify too, the, the body, that document, 100-page parking, downtown parking management plan has a lot more details, I think, what you're looking for.
I'm happy to look at that separately.
Yeah, whereas the body is specific.
And I think that was the main, I think the only other, I had a question more about the, not on this. That's it, if I had for five and six, so thank you.
Great. Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Can we just go to slide 22, please? Could you, can you briefly describe some of these key policies?
Sure.
With that then unbundled that you just explained.
We just didn't talk about it. Sure, sure. So the require, the requiring, requiring of shared parking for non-residential developments, this is something we had actually discussed with council before at one of our hearings. So according to AB 2097, every jurisdiction already has the right, this right, right, to, to require that any parking provided within a half mile of a major transit stop be publicly accessible. And we discussed this with council and we said, you know, the idea about requiring parking, shared parking, publicly accessible parking can be a little dicey, particularly on the residential side. And so we said, you know, we're not recommending any residential sharing. But on the non-residential side, you do have a lot of uses, for example, like banks, things of this sort, that are active during the daytime and at night their lots are empty. And so the recommendation before you right now is to say that any new development coming in, new non-residential development coming in that does choose to provide new parking, that that parking would be publicly accessible during non-operating hours only. And again, that would depend on the business in question.
So currently, the businesses that we have that are not open, we can't park there because it's private, correct? So this remedies that, correct?
For new businesses.
For new businesses?
Yeah, you can't, to my knowledge, unless the city attorney disagrees with me on this, you can't retroactively tell existing businesses that they have.
For new businesses?
Yes, exactly.
Correct. Okay, understand. And then can you just explain some of the ADA requirements? There's a new term called PROAG?
PROAG, yes, the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines. So this was officially adopted by US DOT, so it's essentially effective nationwide now. But what it says is that if there is any, if there are any alterations, and that's a real technical term of art that they use, made to a streetscape area, that you have to bring it up to compliance. And one of the main things that we highlight in our report is the number of accessible spaces that are needed. So if you, if you go, and what I mean by alteration is if you go out and just re-stripe a street with the existing markings, that's not an alteration. But if you change almost anything else, if you put in new curb cuts or change the number of spaces, you immediately have to bring everything into compliance. And what that means is you're, just as we have right now with ADA, you have a required number of off-street accessible spaces. This essentially does the same thing for on-street. And they normally do it based on a block perimeter, if that makes sense. Okay.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Leighton.
Thanks. I'd probably share in Adam's request on, I would like to keep the commercial side of it separate. So I'd like to pull that out. I also just have a concern I have for the required shared parking of new commercial, non-residential developments. So part of, I think, what we've all been clear on is we still want to have a vibrant downtown with commercial buildings. I, if I was going to start a business or a building and the city's forcing me to share the parking, I guess I would have concerns if that's the general rule of the city. For example, if I show up on Friday and there's a bunch of trash or broken bottles or something from people using the now-shared lot, is that responsibility is going to be on me? Even if it isn't on me, I'm still going to want to clean it up so people come to my business the next day. So I would like to see this, and I guess I would propose, and then you can let me know your suggestions on it, I would like to see this more of an incentivized program, what we can do for new developments to share the lot rather than a requirement. I look at it as a requirement as people would say, eh, if I got to share it, I'm just going to move on. But I can be persuaded either way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not here to persuade you. I'm just here to give you the facts around this. So in terms of, first, I would say, imagine the types of development that are going to come in here and who's actually going to provide new parking. Chances are any retail and restaurant that comes into your downtown will not be providing new parking. Really, the, the use that's going to primarily provide new, your parking is office. Looking ahead to the future and when we look at modeling cases with the economics consultant, that was kind of the general agreement, like, yes, new office is probably going to do it. So when you think of new parking, I would, I would stress to think about it in those terms. Now, does that pose a hindrance to those businesses going in? Potentially. I mean, it is a concern to raise. Oftentimes, when, when jurisdictions have approached these shared parking agreements, you could either require it, you could do it as part of the TMA. You could say, hey, timeout, we're going to wait until the TMA is set up. And the TMA is going to be a body that manages all these things through shared parking agreements. If you look in the appendix of appendix B, you'll see that there is a sample legal document in shared parking that is actually in use, that covers things like trash, cleanup, liability, enforcement, things of that sort. So it's, like I said, do you have a legitimate concern? Yeah, it could be, it could be on someone's mind. Generally speaking, when we talked with developers as part of the work that we've been doing here, the feeling was that having shared parking for non-residential uses was not as much an issue than clearly residential. So that's why we felt more comfortable with this approach. And these were specifically with office developers. But again, I'll, I'll leave that at your discretion about how you want to.
So maybe you can just help me understand a little bit better. So maybe you can just help me understand it a little bit better than, just based off of the two things you said. First would be, let's just use a specific example. The Chase Bank has parking, right? If someone took over the building, Chase leaves and takes over the building, is that, is a new, someone who knew, now newly leases the building, is that a new development? Or someone who would have to basically knock down the building, start over, that becomes a new development?
It would be either one. It would also apply to a change of use as well, as it currently stands right now.
Okay. I mean, I guess with knowing that, and you said, we can also say, let's put a pause on it and push all of these policies into a TMA. Is that an option we have?
I mean, of course. It's really up to you about how you want to do this. If you want to, you could do all this immediately. We're doing a broader citywide parking study. You could say, hey, we want to time this out until we get to the broader citywide study, and then we'll make the decision there. You can say, we want to wait until the TMA. I mean, it's completely at your discretion here, how you want to do this. It's just, you know, we felt like we should probably include it here as a critical component of something we're talking about.
Okay. Well, then, that's my last question then. Is this a critical component of something that, if it's passed tonight, then it will be something that is changed into the ordinance? Or is it a critical component of, it is passed tonight, we're going to talk about it in the future? Because those are two very different scenarios for me.
Well, what you could say is, what, maybe if I'm reading you correctly, is you're saying, if we're going to be talking about this again come early 2026, can we talk about it then and put a pause, put the pin in it right now? Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes. If you're understanding me correctly, I would pass all parking issues related to commercial development into a TMA or a later time as the plan develops. With these understandings of, these may be considerations for us to look at.
Councilman Leighton, Madam Mayor, pleasure to be here tonight. I just wanted to add one, one point to this discussion, which was Councilman Dugan's point from before, is this is an opportunity to set an intent. So I think there's a number of ways that a policy like this could be instituted, you know, now or later. But to put something in the plan that says this is the intent, because the shared parking is going to, excuse me, is going to enhance the usage of your downtown. It's going to, you know, encourage people to come here in the evenings and on the weekends if, you know, if they recognize there's a parking supply. So putting it in as an intent, and then letting the actual implementation of that be, as Brian said, whatever you feel comfortable with, I think would be important.
Sure, and I think I understand that point. I think what I don't understand of the advice you're giving me of what is how you indicate that. If the word is required, I, makes it sound like if I'm picking up this document and I'm going to move into San Carlos as a business, I would be like, hmm, I'm not sure. I want to move into San Carlos if I have to work through this. If the word is proposed or something different, if required equals the same as we're thinking about it, then I'm fine going as is. If I need to find a different word to not be as strict, then I will propose that. I'm just not getting a clear answer from anyone.
So to find the right wording would make you comfortable if we can express the intent, but find the right wording is what you're looking for?
Sure, yeah. Good way to put it.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I could, you know, I definitely hear you guys, and I agree, required is a strong word there. I do like the intent being placed here. You know, we all drive by the, you know, like the parking behind the yoga studio with the never park here, $375 tow fine, and it sits empty all the time, right? Like, that's the problem that this is hoping to address. And just to be clear, these, you know, I think maybe we're hesitating on the details here, because these can be done very flexibly. I mean, we're just talking about when they're not using the office, can someone else use their parking spots, you know? So I'm generally supportive of thinking through this stuff, but I totally agree, required is a strong word. And I agree, we have a lot more to think about and consider. Perhaps the word would be implement. So our intent is to implement shared parking for non-residential developments, but that, we haven't done it yet, so we don't know the details yet. So maybe that's a better word.
If that's what is going to show the, I mean, I would agree, I think we're all aligned in that we all would like to implement that. I think it's just how we do it is the devil's in the details, and you put these things in documents. And I understand, no one wants to sit here and wordsmith anything, but I want to make sure that we're getting it right for when, on things that I think are important, that we'll signal to the outside. So if implements that word, it's fine. If staff wants to come back with whatever word it is, it's fine. I just don't want to make it sound like it's law at this point in time, because I'm not willing to take that step. That's all I'm trying to say.
Yes, so through, for the council's consideration, we're going to look at this in two ways. One is through way of a policy, and the other is through way of a standard. And a standard is the standard. You have to meet the standard. If the council's not comfortable with that being a standard, we can receive your direction and adjust this. However, going back to what Jim Stickley was mentioning, because of all of these key policies were really developed in a comprehensive and holistic way to really think about the different ways that we can manage parking resources, we could go to the policy, and instead of, I think the word required is in the policy. So this is where we could insert different words, such as investigate the feasibility or the possibility of something that perhaps the council maybe isn't ready to do just yet. Those would be the ways that we would, we would handle comments like these. Is we can look, we can look at softer language for the policies, keep them in there, because a lot of work was researched and contemplated, and these are tools that the council could pick up at some point in time. So we can soften the language from a policy standpoint. And then with respect to the standard pursuant to council direction, if these are standards that you do not want to see in the plan, then we would have to, then we could remove those.
I think we're pro investigate for, investigate feasibility? Okay, all right.
Can I add one question on that? And I guess, Neil, I guess, or Councilman Leighton, one of the questions is, is your concern in general just sort of the one-off or two spots that a business may have versus the B of A parking lot? And is there a way that is more incentive-based? That is, if you, you know, if you come in and you're redoing the Chase Bay because you bought it and stuff like that, we may waive some fees in order for you, but you will have to give up, provide shared parking or something like that? That may be a way to do it versus requiring it?
Yeah, my general concern is, not today, my general concern is development for when these properties do turn over, and that to encourage people to still want to do business in San Carlos. I'm going to always take it from the approach of a more incentive-based to get to our standards rather than a straight, you know, here's the line, don't cross it, if that makes sense for everybody.
And if I may, we're, just to be clear, we're talking about the standard for publicly accessible private non-residential parking. Great.
Okay, did that complete your questions, Councilmember Leighton?
Yeah, sorry, I took a little.
Okay, no, it's great. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to understand. So if I'm a new business, and I'm not operating during those hours, I don't understand why somebody else can't park there.
Are you talking about currently?
Currently. No, 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 sorry. In the new, like, the implement versus the required.
Okay, so the way it functions currently is if I'm a private development, okay, okay.
I got it, yeah.
And you can't park it, and your question is, why can't you park there?
No, my question is, why can't we require it instead of implementing it?
Oh, well, that's a question for you. That's the recommendation right now.
I feel like they're going to take advantage, there's going to be signs all over, do not park. It's, you know, that kind of thing that happens behind our yoga studio that I can't ever get to, right? There's a whole parking lot empty, but we can't park there. So I don't understand why we can't say required.
Yeah, I mean, I concur. I would be more comfortable, if we don't like required, I think a stated intent of implement. I do think we want to be in the world where if someone is adding 100 spaces, people should be able to come down on Saturday and use them if the businesses aren't using them. And that's, that's what we're talking about. So I would like to be clear on the intent that, hey, we want to figure that out. I totally agree, there's a lot of details to figure it out. I don't think that is in the realm of incentive or recommending, because I just think they won't do it, and then we'll have more red signs saying, never park here. And, you know, parking will be precious in our downtown. We should all, you know, play nice and work together. That's kind of the intent of this thing. So I agree with Councilmember Venkatesh on a stated intent. I think implement gets you there. If required doesn't get you there, I don't think I want to say investigate further. You know, I just think we've done a lot of planning here, and we might be, I'm beyond that point personally.
In the implement, we would weigh the pros and cons and carve out small properties versus large properties. We would, that would be part of the implementation process, I would assume.
I'd be okay with that, because I do think there's going to be cases where we are going to want to require it. You know, if someone's coming into your point with 100 new parking spaces, that's going to sit empty on the weekends. You know, we should take advantage of that. Versus like somebody behind the small business that has one spot there. I don't know that we need to sort of take that spot, like try to get access to that spot.
And there's a ton to this, right? This is a complicated area. So of course, we'll be considering all that, and of course, all of that will be a council-level decision ultimately.
Okay, I see, I see a head.
No, I think we all agree. I think we're all on the same page. It's just how we get there, the devil's in the details.
Yep. Jim.
Sorry, just a reminder that the other intent in the specific plan is that the alleys are reorganized and managed to be publicly accessible parking. So just like we have now in the 700 Block West, you know, really nicely reorganized and managed. In other blocks, those are a mix of city-owned land and privately-owned land. And the idea is to, you know, as part of these phased improvements, I think even the Phase 3 that we have shown on the phasing diagram is one of those alleys that has mixed ownership, and the intent is to reorganize that into shared parking. So just a reminder that that's also built into the plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think those alleys are a mess, and I can't wait to get in there and organize them. Okay, I'll just add one final thing on Chapter 6, Page 140. Working with Peninsula Joint Corridor, Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board to explore the establishment of a secure bicycle parking facility at the Caltrain station. I'm just shocked that this doesn't exist. I mean, this seems like such an easy thing that our transit agencies and, you know, we're all trying to use micro-mobility to get to the train station. So I hope that that can be worked on soon. I'm just shocked. I don't know if any of us sit on the transit boards. I don't think so. But anyway, I'm glad that that's in there, and thank you for pointing that out. Okay, are we ready to move on to Chapters 7 and 8? That would be public realm, where a lot of outdoor dining questions can be brought up. And Chapter 8, public art. So who would like to start us off there? Councilmember Rack.
I'll go first. Thank you. Lisa, can you tell me, I know we've talked before, and I didn't see it in the plan, but we talked about trying to implement potentially like an entertainment zone in the closed block at least, and I don't know if we need to do that in the 600 block so that you can have sort of, business can sell alcohol for having outdoor events and stuff like that. Was that in the plan, or where are we on that?
That is in the plan. I know we added a policy on creation. Look into the feasibility or investigate the possibility of establishing entertainment zones in key blocks. Let me see if I can get some help from...
It's Chapter 4.
Thank you, Andrew. Chapter 4.
Went to 4, I'm sorry. I'm out of order.
I was excited to see it in Chapter 4, PED 7.
All right, I missed that one. All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, so my only other question then is, or it's more of a comment, I guess, is on the awning piece. I have real concerns with requiring, for awnings and umbrellas for private property. I have a hard time supporting using the city colors. People may have branding, they may have other things they use already, and now we're sort of dictating, if you want to live here, work here, or have a business here, you have to have this color, and you can't have X, and you have Y. It just seems the wrong approach to me. I get it in this, in our public spaces, like if we have dining that's in our public spaces. I just don't want to go tell one of the businesses, like, and say, hey, I'm sorry, you can't have, you know, a green awning of this shade because it's not in our color palette. It just seems to me too dictatorial in terms, and too harsh in terms of doing that. And I think in terms of, like, when you say generic names, like, can a business not have their business name on the awning? Like, I think Bow Wow Meow has it on their thing, it says that's the business, right? I just feel like we're sort of being overly restrictive with that, and have real concerns about, about doing that.
Let me start with the business name on the awnings and umbrella. This is drawn from our current regulations in our sign ordinance. Our sign ordinance provides, you know, different types of signage allowances based upon the width of the storefront. You can have different types of signage, window signs, et cetera. And in the, and in our current ordinance, it says no signage on umbrellas or awnings. So that is a carryover. If the council wants to change that, you know, obviously, you can, you can let staff know. We can look into those modifications based on your direction. And then with respect to the colors, sort of the same, same line of thinking. If the council wants to go a different direction, we can certainly go that direction as well. If I recall, I think this was brought up at a study session, and we heard some comments about that. So that's how it ended up in the plan. But if you want to clarify and clarify that only for public spaces, that's up to the council. You can certainly make that decision tonight.
And I'm less concerned about the lettering and more about the color scheme. Just from my perspective, I think that that's a bigger issue on that. And I think it may have been the meeting that I missed, I think that we talked about it, but I did send some comments in to staff, I think, on that. But I just have concerns with wanting to sort of dictate for a private business what colors they can use on their own property.
Okay, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll just respond to say, Adam, I thought that was some of our best work, picking out, picking out umbrella colors.
Well, that's a good discussion.
No, I support you. I don't think we need to be dictating colors and such. I do think what staff proposed around names are fine. I mean, it's, you know, I think we're allowing names on the awnings. We're not wanting words on all the umbrellas. I know what I don't want is I don't want alcohol advertisement umbrellas out there. I don't want that, for example.
I agree with you.
And then I noticed, and I understand, the existing is from today, not like what we have talked about in the past. So I think I'm clear on proposed. But when we're talking about the barriers, and we're talking about the awnings and dropping out on the sides, we're still maintaining the standard that we're not going to be allowing folks to bolt things down permanently on our nice new cobblestones and such, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. That was my question. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Lisa, could you remind us how many colors are in the city's color palette? Quite a few, right? I mean...
I think there are maybe five or six.
Okay. Yeah, are they the ones that kind of line the bottom of the slide, basically? But not the neon ones, it would be a more neutral shade?
Yeah, I think they do represent, yeah, that I'm looking at the design of the slides, yes. Those are the similar colors.
Similar colors, okay. I'll circle back to my questions. Councilmember Leighton.
I just have a question on the awnings and how it relates to the permanent fixtures in the ground. I believe Calav and Palo Alto has adopted these ordinances about awnings, but there is a permanent fixture to hook them into the ground, from the ones I see practically. Is there a way of creating an awning for inclement weather that doesn't require some form of a permanent fixture to be hooked into the ground?
Yes, we've seen those, and not every awning needs to be bolted down to the ground.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just ask a question regarding heaters? So no more propane heaters, correct?
No, we're not necessarily, there is no requirement that gas heaters are not allowed. They can still be allowed. They need to be reviewed by fire. Our fire marshal is here this evening. She can correct me if I'm mistaken or answer the question, but we do allow those.
All right, I think it was a public comment that requested no more propane heaters. Is there other cities, how do they do the heat around their downtown? Like at Palo Alto, I know they have like the overhead kind of gas heaters and things like that. Alto, I know they have like the overhead kind of gas heaters and things like that.
Yeah, I think those are the electric heaters, and I think even with electric heaters, as long, maybe Janice, I can get your help on this one. My understanding is that they need to be reviewed. All of these would need to be reviewed by fire to ensure that they are being installed, placed in a way that's consistent with the manufacturer's instruction. I'm correct? She says. Thank you.
Thank you. And then slide 24, I'm sure there's a reason for this. So everyone has eight feet from building face, and then Laurel's 700 block has nine feet. Is that because of size?
The reason why the 700 block has a little bit more is because it's considered to be, it's going to transform into a full pedestrian plaza, so there's more space opportunity for those, for that particular block as compared to the other block where we still are allowing vehicle throughput. Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to build on your comment about heaters because I, and Lisa, you and I emailed about this. Page 164 says use of portable heating devices may be permitted with approval of the fire marshal. I'd like to consider an amendment that removes portable. I think that if you have fixed, mounted heater above on a trellis, which we have pictures of in our staff report or in the packet, I think, you know, that we should, those should be allowed as well, assuming that they are approved by the fire marshal. So those are not necessarily portable, they're mounted, so I would just say use of heating devices may be permitted with approval of the fire marshal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then if Al can come up, I'd like to hear Al, what Al was going to say about outdoor dining. He, or maybe you were going to mention it, Lisa? I don't remember, but either. Let Lisa have a break.
I think this is the backup slide. We might have a backup slide, Crystal.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So recently, we have been talking to restaurateurs in the downtown, and one of the concerns that was expressed is that for restaurants facing the rain gardens, they have less area to use for their outdoor dining. They would get nine feet in that pink area that you see next to town, for instance. Below the green, the green represents the rain garden area. And so we went back and thought about this and looked at the schematic that you see there, and we had some sidewalks in there, and then you have the main area, the 20-foot main throughput. And those sidewalks were intended to allow for additional circulation for pedestrians, so that's the intent of that, to have multiple areas for circulation. But when we went back and looked at it, we said, well, could you allow for that pedestrian area to be used by a restaurant and still safely get people through there? And what we determined is that, yes, you could, and there's no fire safety issue or other pedestrian circulation issue there. So for instance, the, where you don't have the rain gardens, if you had a restaurant, you could use the five-foot tree strip because we talked about using that area for outdoor dining. And so those restaurants would get an extra five feet, but these folks wouldn't. And so when we looked at it, we determined that it would be feasible. It's not in the plan currently, but we wanted to be able to address this issue tonight, as we recently heard that this was a key issue for downtown restaurants. And so this is something that we believe is feasible and could be included in the plan, but it's up to your consideration.
And just so I'm reading this rendering correctly, you're talking about this kind of red, red area that's kind of straddling where the sidewalk was or is, and the rain garden, or orange, whatever, salmon?
Yeah, just to explain the diagram, so the purple or mauve strip is the nine-foot strip, right? And then the white strip is the circulation zone. Then the dark green strips are the five-foot tree strips. And where we have a rain garden, the dark green strips are interrupted, right? Because the rain garden is in that same position. So someone, let's say on the other side of the street, T-Hut, for example, they would have the mauve zone plus the option of adding the five-foot tree strip, whereas Town or let's say Nick the Greek, they don't, you know, they've got a rain garden in front of their store, and so they don't have the option of adding the five-foot strip. So what Al is saying is that in those instances, the city could consider, and this also could be a case-by-case approval, you know, a business owner could apply for additional space, and the city could look at all the factors, and if that, you know, if that works, then they could, they could approve that as a variance to add space to the nine-foot zone. So in effect, you'd be adding the white zone, the white strip to the mauve strip in those locations. Does that make sense?
The white, but it looks like the orange, it goes into the rain garden.
Yeah, the orange is the current parklet. That's the existing parklet. So that's just there for reference.
Okay, that's not the extension. They would just extend it to the white.
Correct.
And bounded by the two sides of their own building.
Yep.
Okay, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, I will send it back to additional council questions. Councilmember Leighton?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to just piggyback and say I do support what you mentioned, because I do believe the plan says currently no electrical. So I'm in support of removing that language to have, if it's on a trellis, those type of heaters be allowed and not just portable heaters that need to be approved. And then I'm just, since, I'm just trying to figure out what we just got presented with. So Al, are you saying this isn't in the plan currently, but we could put it in the plan? That's what you'd have us need guidance on? Or is it something back to intent versus required? Is it something that, I mean, I guess my general guidance is I'd kind of like just one plan, and then once we have something set, then we start to kind of chip away at it as a, as it relates to parklets and dining and that continued conversation. But I'm just trying to be clear of what's asked of me tonight.
Yes, for this particular slide, we can incorporate this provision for additional outdoor dining space and make it clear this would be allowed on a case-by-case basis. We would need to look at it. But that's something that if we get your direction tonight, that we can absolutely fold into the specific plan. Yes.
So just to add to that, you're giving us direction on the idea, and that would be in the plan. It's just because it's a policy document. What we do with these is we have a sidewalk cafe permit currently, a process that you pay a fee, and the city allows you to use it. And we look at the plan and we ask for your layout and everything. So what we would do is amend, once this is your direction, we would amend the sidewalk cafe permit process to incorporate a case-by-case basis review of these situations.
I mean, I guess my general opinion on that, just because we're talking about it, would be I'm pro something like that. I would prefer us to talk about it not as a one-off, but I prefer us to talk about it as like the general parklet program, which I believe is coming back to us at some point in time and how that's going to, if it's not coming back to us, then that's fine, but I thought it was at some point. But that would be my preferred process of how we do it. Is it coming back to us, or should I just say, sure?
No.
Okay.
No, it would be replaced by the sidewalk cafe permit process that we have in place, so we'd need to modify that. But we aren't recommending parklets here. We're, it's just a different concept.
No, I'm sorry. I'm not articulating it well. I thought there's going to be a broader discussion later on about how all, outdoor dining. I'm answering my own question as I talk out loud, so I apologize. So, okay. I'm pro you working through this policy.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also support this. I think our goal is to give our businesses more outdoor dining. So if this enables that, then I would support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
I support that as well. And then I just had one question on the 600 block for the Wheeler Plaza kind of area. Do we, where do we, are we contemplating in there any sort of heating and lighting? How does that look for that? Because we have sort of outdoor, public outdoor dining, and we're going to have events and stuff, and potentially as well. Do we have, has that been sort of planned for?
Not in a detailed sense. So I think in the same way that we've gone through a design process for Harrington Park, we would want to get much more specific about, you know, what amenities, you know, electrical infrastructure, you know, the intent is talked about in this specific plan. We wanted to accommodate events, so we want the stage to be wired for that. We want to accommodate the vendors in that sort of permanent structure on the south edge. That structure would want to be electrified. Heaters, we haven't really talked about, but I think some of those things would need to be looked at at the, you know, when you get into the detailed design process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rack. I too support this. And Al, thanks. And Lisa, thank you for hearing the feedback from our downtown business owners. I had a feeling that these rain gardens would become an issue, and so I'm glad that we are looking at being flexible for those that have these outside of their property by no fault of their own. They are, they do provide an important, you know, flooding mitigation aspect to the downtown, so I definitely appreciate putting this in the plan, and I will support that. I wanted to circle back about the umbrellas because I've traveled all over the country and looked at pedestrian plazas, and I feel like in a lot of ways Santana Row has red and blue, and that's it. And other places have like a set number of colors. So I'm wondering, you know, if we could just add flexibility to the language of like having the city's color palette, but leaving it up to the zoning administrator to approve different shades. I don't think that we really want a bunch of white umbrellas down there. I think that they will be dirty, and they reflect the light. I don't think we want black. I, you know, I feel like we should have some guidance on colors so that we don't, I don't know, I don't really want to mishmash. I want the downtown to look professional. And I, you know, I understand that certain businesses have colors, so I'm trying to figure out a way that we can be flexible, but also not have just a total rainbow of flavors down there. But I might be the only person who has that feeling. I'm thinking shades of, you know, our color palette or something like that. I always see a lot of lights go on.
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in, I would just say, you know, we were only talking about umbrellas there because I don't think we're wanting to dictate awnings because that's where the colors come in. So maybe color palette or something complementary with the color of the awning as determined by staff or the zoning administrator or something like that. Because I, you know, I do, I worry about the city palette just not making any sense against the colors of their business reflected in the awning, you know, that's what I worry about. So maybe we suggest our palette or complementary with the awning and the, you know, logo colors of the business or something like that.
I would be okay with that. Let's see, Vice Mayor, you had thoughts?
I'm going to agree with Madam Mayor. I like the fewer colors just to be consistent, but I also want, you know, leeway for the businesses. So when I look at a Santana Row, for example, they do have maybe two colors, and it looks nice when they have matching chairs and matching tables. And I would like to see a little bit more of that, a little consistency, I guess. But I don't want to take away, you know, the business owners' prerogative also.
Vice Mayor, I mean, I keep calling you Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, so I guess as I think through like sort of the umbrella piece, maybe is not as important a point because most of the people have awnings all the way to the end of their sort of eight-foot or nine-foot, so it's less of an issue on that. So I could be fine with like any kind of umbrellas, I think, on that end. I agree like on solid colors. We should be all solid colors, not, you know, having multiple colors on the same awning. But I would sort of stick with, at least for those, for the businesses, they should be able to have whatever color awning they want attached to their building. But I could concede on the umbrellas to whatever the city palette is.
Okay, or shades thereof that are complimentary to their, you know, business. Is staff able to work on that kind of language? Is that giving enough direction on that?
Yes, I believe so. So we're starting with the color palette, but we're looking for something, or we're open to other colors that are complementary to these colors, or maybe different tones, or...
Not for the awning, so.
I'm sorry, for the umbrellas.
For the umbrellas.
For the umbrellas.
Just the umbrellas, complimentary with the awning or the business colors.
And then I just wanted to add one more thing. On page 159, I know that we've seen this before, but I just wanted to highlight it. The farmer's market vending zone and the breaks between the booths. I really appreciate that layout. I spent some time last week visiting businesses downtown, and several commented on how hard it is for them to get seen during the farmer's market and the art and wine fair, and how they really negatively impacted their businesses, those street fairs and festival setups. So I think having that description there and the breaks in the tents, I think, is really important, and I do hope that we can continue to look at that going forward, to figure out how, you know, we don't want these events to be devastating to our local businesses either. We want to try and build everybody up with those, with those kind of events. So, and I know we're going to continue to take a look at that. So thanks for that diagram in there. Any other comments on six and seven? Oh, sorry, seven and eight, eight included, public art. Okay, why don't we do nine, 10, and 11, which is sustainability, infrastructure, and implementation and phasing? Questions on nine, 10, and 11, our final three chapters? I have a question on chapter 10 for infrastructure. I'm just wondering, I guess this might be for Public Works. What are we doing with Cal Water? I know that they want to replace their water pipe down Laurel. It's old, it needs to be done. How are we thinking about phasing that ahead of the beautiful work we're doing?
Neemayor, Councilmembers Grace Lee, City Engineer. We've been having several meetings with Cal Water to get a sense of what they plan for upgrade, and they know that we have a schedule for downtown, starting with Harrington Park, which doesn't involve Cal Water water main because we're getting our source from the alleyway. But starting with our 700 block, we want to fold their main upgrade into our construction project so that it is one project construction at one time, and we don't have to do stages with that. It's still under, under talks. We're still discussing about it. I mean, we're, so, but that's our plan, is to make it, to shorten the construction duration by having construction happen at the same time, coordinating the effort. So we're definitely meeting with them.
Super. Glad to hear that. Thank you, Grace. Any other comments or questions on eight, nine, nine, 10, and 11? Okay. All right, then, should we take a break? It's nine o'clock and then do public comment? All right, why don't we take a five, five-minute break? Okay, we'll be back at 9:05. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there with us. Five minutes, we'll be right back. Five minutes, we'll be right back. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for your patience with us as we worked through a lot of details with the plan. So we will now go ahead and open public comment only on the downtown specific plan on this item that we're hearing this evening. If you're joining us on Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand. We will be closing the raise hand feature momentarily. But we will start with comments in the room. And if you would like to make a public comment, please grab a speaker slip at the back and you give it to our city clerk, and she will call on you in turn. So again, the raise hand feature on Zoom will be closing momentarily. Crystal, do we have any speaker slips this evening?
Yes, I just have one in person from Sharla Gomez with Sam Trans.
Okay. Welcome. You will have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Sharla Gomez, and I'm here to represent San Trans. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. San Carlos is facing a significant challenge in meeting its state-minded RINA obligations with about 2,700 units by 2031 and about 1,000 affordable units. That is a pace of housing production that the city has never been approached before. The San Trans property at 1250 San Carlos Avenue is a fully consolidated 1.7 acre site that will be vacant in the summer of 2026. As you know, we're committed to putting housing here. However, we have serious concerns with the proposed upzoning with a minimum of 90 dwelling units per acre. Economic feasibility really drives delivery, a minimum that is too high risks leaving the site undeveloped for years. At 75, construction could begin in as little as three years with keys on the door, probably in five to six years, basically within this RINA cycle. At 90 dwelling units per acre, we will, we need to basically wait for market conditions to improve possibly five years or more, and will be way probably beyond the RINA cycle. So we fear that we'll not be able to contribute to San Carlos RINA housing obligations. In the meantime, construction costs between 3% to 6% per year. So tonight, we're respectfully asking council to retain the existing zoning MUD 100 zoning, which is 75 dwelling units per acre minimum. At this density, the project pencils out and yields about 130 homes in our estimations, including 25% of rural housing. At 90 dwelling units per acre, the 1250, so it's basically a difference between 20 and 25 units. The increased costs required to force this 90 dwelling units per acre far exceed the value of those additional units, in our opinion. So the real question for you this evening is, is San Carlos better off delivering 130 homes within this housing element cycle or waiting probably years to have 155 that may never materialize in this RINA cycle? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the raise hand feature on Zoom. And do we have any other in-person comments this evening, Crystal?
I do not have any other in-person speaker slips, but if you do have a comment, if you'd like to approach now? No? Okay. And then I do have one hand on Zoom, so we've closed that. And I'll go ahead and allow CT. You can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I have several questions. I'll try to be quick. One is the rain garden bio retention area. Is it possible to keep those away from restaurants that we, that already have extensive outdoor dining, such as Town? And I don't know this restaurant named Alia, because it looks like they use quite a bit of space, and maybe some of the neighboring spaces or dining places don't use as many. And so maybe we can move it over. Two is San Carlos Avenue being close to traffic? I don't know how to read a plan, so I was just, I thought that was brought up last time, and I'm just double checking. And then is it possible to have a food hall where small food businesses can sell their wares without renting out a building or commercial space? And because we see this in Hawaii, and it's a great place for people to get together and try different foods. And it'll be wonderful if small businesses can be upheld that way in our area as well. And then I agree with allowing store owners to choose their own umbrella and awning colors. It looks beautiful the way it is because every store has their own taste on what they want. And parking for businesses, I agree with rewarding it. And because if I were a business owner, I would be concerned about why I don't have a business parking and making it, you know, for sure that they have to share with the public. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Any other public comments, Crystal?
No, that was our, our one. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I'm going to ask staff if you could come up and just, the last caller raised a few good questions about moving the rain gardens, why they're located where they are. Is San Carlos Avenue close to traffic? What about a food hall? Those were three of the top questions that I heard asked.
Okay. Certainly, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, we can address those. I'm going to have Jim discuss the rain garden question. But while he comes up to the podium, I can definitely share that San Carlos Avenue is not closed to traffic. That will remain open to traffic. And the idea for small businesses, like little food vendors, would be to utilize the offering that we would have in the new plaza on the 600 blocks, where we're looking for those more formalized pop-ups, if you will, with all of the electrical components. So those are the three, and I'll let Jim respond to rain gardens.
So the rain gardens, we've been dialing those in, in the process of the, of the design process, both their locations, because they need to be placed where they catch the runoff according to the slopes of the street. And so they've moved around a little bit in order to do that optimally, as well as their size, so that they're the, you know, the required size to retain the amount of rainwater that's required. So moving those further would be very challenging. They're, you know, they're, they're really working now in terms of their rainwater function. I would also say that because businesses change over time, there could be businesses that are, let's say, non-food and beverage now, that might be food and beverage in the future. So I think it would, it's, I don't know if we want to get into a game of responding to, you know, an existing condition that may be changing in the future. And I think with the additional flexibility that we spoke about earlier in the meeting, with utilizing that additional circulation space, we've, we've addressed some of the concerns that have been raised.
Thanks, Jim. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll just chime in on the bio retention. I mean, I, you know, it's, it is a attractive feature. It is a, you know, a good, I guess, sustainability signaling feature. I'll just point out, it's not a vital feature. So I do support us being flexible with the size, the number. I certainly don't want bio retention to be impinging on the commercial viability of the space. And it's optional because storm drains work just fine. So if we have to add a storm drain or two, we could do that as opposed to bio retention. I would like to keep plenty of that, but I'm just voicing, I'm willing to be flexible. I want it to work. I hear staff, you can't always predict where the next restaurant's going to be. So, you know, at some point, you got to just put these in, which I understand. But, you know, I do want us to be thoughtful there, and I'm willing to be flexible with that.
Okay. Thank you. So additional questions for staff? Or we can also open it up to council discussion and comment time? I did have one question that I wanted to ask Lisa at the very beginning, and I forgot. And it's just to address, we've heard some public concern of not having heard about this before despite so much outreach, you know, years and years of outreach. I'm just wondering, I have a specific couple of questions for you. How many people signed up for the e-news service for the distribution list? Do you remember, I think you told the planning commission the number of how many people were on that? And I think that's really illustrative of the people who have been plugged in.
Yes. Since we've started this process, our email signup list has grown to over 1,500 individuals. So that's one form, that's one channel of communication that we use to get the word out.
And the surveys that people filled out, what was the range of people who participated in those?
Probably over 1,000. In one survey alone, we had 700 responders. So we did very well in comparison to the other surveys that we've done for different projects. So this was very well reviewed, and lots of folks provided their input. And I could keep going, but I'll, I'll let you ask me.
No, that's good. Those were kind of my two questions. I think that, you know, we did cast a very wide net for many years, and there was a lot of public feedback. A lot of people were paying attention and giving us that feedback that fed into this process. So thank you. Okay. I don't see any other questions. So discussion or final remarks on the plan? Okay.
I think we had a couple, you were taking down some notes on a couple of things. And so I, I wanted to just go back, at least for me, on the, the fact that we're looking at upzoning, potentially the Sam Trans building, that gives us more flexibility in the plan. But according to the city attorney, we have to do it at the same time. So I've had, I've spoke with both the city manager and the city attorney. And I would sort of ask if the council would be open to, we could take the Sam Trans upzoning off the table for tonight, approve the plan, and bring it back at another date and give staff a chance to look at any kind of potential zoning changes we might want to do with the downtown core, that it's something I've talked about before, like, could we lower the downtown core, maybe do setbacks, things? So staff can come back and see what an equal number would look like. And then we can bring it back in January, February, and just take that single item up. So the city attorney told me that that's a possibility, that we could do it that way, move ahead, move the plan with everything but that one piece, if, if the council was open to it.
I like that approach, so I would support it.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I, you know, I, I Madam Mayor, yeah, I, you know, I, I do want us to be thoughtful on where and how we're restricting housing to make sure we're ensuring commercial viability. I know there's other concerns, so I'm supportive of that. I did have a question, you know, I, we heard from Samtrans. Our own planning commission recommended us not to upzone it. So what, what, you know, what is behind these concerns about this upzoning? It strikes me as an ideal place for more density next to our train station and such.
Yeah, this is a good opportunity to clarify. So the planning and transportation actually recommended the upzone.
Oh, they, okay.
Yes, yes.
Got it. I guess I misread that. Okay, but I...
John, I'm not, I'm not opposed to upzoning it. I just would like to look at it more as holistically, and what we're doing in the zoning for that, for the specific plan.
I agree with you. I had the same thought about the whole northeast area, but this is a much more spot of opportunity, so I appreciate that. Yeah, good idea.
I'll support that as well. So we will just bring that back in the new year. Okay. Okay, great. Okay, and then we had John's suggestion to not reference state law at all in the document.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't want a bunch of caveats in there, like, oh, we're zoning this, but we know SB 79 blows it out of the water. Like, I don't want guidelines in our own code about state laws. People should go research to figure out how to get around our own code. So that's the stuff I don't want in there. Is that, is that executable guidance?
Well, the, it was really one sentence that was proposed to be added, that just recognized that we're not overriding state law with our, with our specific plan. So it was not any kind of, anything specific about any, any particular state law, or any, or how it applied to any particular project. That's why I was talking about, we, we would take projects on a case-by-case basis, because there's still some findings that need to be made, even under the state law. So it's not, it's not a total blank check, but, but we were just trying to recognize that, so.
Understood. I, I'm just, I'm proposing we don't recognize that. As far as I know, we're free to pass our zoning, and the state apparently is free to step all over it, but I, I don't want to be engaging in that thought exercise in our code.
Councilmember Rack?
So I certainly support removing any specific references to any specific pieces of legislation, for sure. And I think if, you know, if, I'm okay, I, I don't want to have a document that's sort of filled with these sort of caveats. I think, you know, if there's something in an appendix that says, you know, we're, these are, if we need to have some reference, I would say, put it there versus all over the document.
I mean, it's, I think, it sounds like, you know, the, I hope that intent is clear. If it's not, let me know.
It's, it's really in one or two places in the entire document that just references that we're not intending to supersede state law, but it's not, it's not put everywhere. It's just in a couple of places.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't see any value in having that. I mean, you know, they are superseding us, that is simply a fact. I don't think we have to state it for the world, do we?
I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm recommending that you do it, but I, the state law is the state law, so I, you know, I think that's your point, so.
Yeah, I'm proposing we don't do it.
I'm sorry, do we all need to weigh in on this?
Yes.
Yeah, we do, because we're going through amendments that we would include tonight.
I mean, it's the difference between my point earlier of required versus intent, right? At this point in time, it's just language. It's your document, and it's whatever makes you feel better. I'm always going to side on low risk, so I'm always going to side with the city attorney that says, if we should put it in, then put it in. I'm happy to be outvoted, but I'm going to put it in.
I mean, so I guess if I can, so, Greg, because like, for example, on page 588, it says, consistent with AB 2097, there are no minimum parking requirements referred to all, so, I mean, I, I would rather just have sort of some generic statement that says, we're, we're going to follow state law where we're required to, and then not, and take out specific recommendations, and just have it in there as a, as a spot. I don't think we need to be citing every single piece of state legislation that, you know, especially SB 79 is going to get, hopefully get changed at some point.
Well, I, I appreciate the discussion, and, I mean, there are places in this document that talk about, you know, applying with infrastructure laws and ADA, and I mean, it's, it's there. I mean, it, so I, I think that the, it was just the, it was really in one particular area where, where our consultants and I discussed where we thought we might want to reference this, and it was in the, in the development side of it.
Chapter 3.
I think it was 3.2, right?
Yeah, the standard section.
Yeah. So it was in this one, one section that we were proposing to add it. I mean, us putting it in, to your point, Councilmember Dugan, us, us putting it or not putting it, is not going to change the state law, so, but, you know, people do look at these things, and that's why I was recommending putting it in. I mean, outside agencies look at our plans, and, and I don't know what their reaction would be, but we're putting it on the record that we recognize state law applies, so that may be sufficient.
Yeah, I just don't know what we gain by adding that. Like, you know, what, what do we gain? What, how does the world change because we, we acknowledge state law preempts us? I mean, we could say federal law preempts us too, which is factual. I mean, I, we could say, you know, anything like that, so I don't know what the value of any of it is.
I'd be interested to see what the city manager's thoughts are on this.
Well, I, I think my thoughts would be that typically I listen to the city attorney's advice, and I, I think, I think the imaginings here are, there are elements of the council's direction in this land use plan, where you very much want to draw a line in the sand with some of the state laws, and say, you know, this is what we want. And you, you know, you've had the conversation, and you recognize that, you know, federal laws and state laws do preempt us in all kinds of ways. And I think the city attorney's point is, have that statement in there somewhere in case he's defending your decision down the road, because, you know, HUD or somebody takes exception to what we've done here, or others emulate us, and politics moves, you know, faster than legal changes in Sacramento, and, and he finds himself in court that he has something to point to that says, yeah, the city council says right here, they understood that state law preempts the, you know, I certainly understand your point as well, which is, we don't have to say it, so why say it? But I think at the end of the day, you're not going to trigger anybody who's doing a development project, who's going to, like, be like, oh, we, we had no idea we could do that until we read your document, and then we understood that state law was going to preempt you. So I, I don't think there's harm either way, most likely, but the risk is probably more on the city attorney's side, even though it's probably a slim, slim risk.
Thank you, Jeff. And I, you know, it would be helpful if we actually had the language, but, so the language is just a generic, we'll comply with state law. I mean, that's what it says.
Who's going to win?
Here's the language that we developed. Nothing in this chapter is intended to contradict or supersede state housing law. Any standard herein is determined to be, if any standard is determined to be preempted or otherwise in conflict with state law, the applicable state law shall prevail. That's the one sentence.
I'm fine with that. John, I appreciate where you're coming from on this, but I also, I would rather not expose this to staff, because I want to see this project get done as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather not have it, but I can be outvoted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll side with the city attorney.
Okay, I think that has been decided then. And then finally, we had two things on the parking, removing unbundling for commercial leases, and then, that's A, and then B is implementing the shared commercial parking, making it publicly accessible.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I may, what I, what I thought I heard was change required to implement it for shared parking on non-residential developments.
Is everyone good with that language? Implement shared parking?
Yes.
I guess I just want to, so when you're saying, we're going to say, instead of with new developments, we're not going to require shared parking, but we are going to...
We're going to implement policies to consider, yeah.
Okay, so implement policies, not just implement, because I don't understand what implement and share parking seems the same thing, but implement policies around promoting, around promoting shared parking?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I want to be in the business of requiring shared parking, you know, when it makes sense, and we have a lot of work to do to figure out when and where it makes sense, but...
I want to say, but I, so I guess, why would we not saying required when feasible or something?
I mean, I, I was trying to help with the concern that we're not going to, I don't think we're intending to require it in every single case, but we want to implement policies of shared parking on non-residential developments. So maybe, yeah.
Sort of study, implement, use the word study first, and then we can add sort of a item, or, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, I don't want to, you know, my thought is, I, I don't want to study it. I mean, I think we want to, you know, implement a policy of this.
Implement a policy of shared parking is, I'm okay with that. Because I do think there are ones that we, we would want to, in certain sites, just require shared parking.
Exactly.
So I think if we put a policy in place around it and parameters, I'm good with that.
If staff could just ask a clarifying question, what we heard is that we, the council was not in favor of having a standard that required it. We did hear that from a policy perspective, take out the word require, and use a softer explore, develop, look into, look into this particular strategy. And then we also heard that it, the council did not want it to be applied blanket-wide, but maybe on a case-by-case, large project versus small project. So what we're taking away, and Brian, maybe you can come up here, because you're going to have to help us write this, but, is to, what's very clear is to take out the standard for required, and then really work on a policy that combines all of those components, and really directs the city to implement this in the future, once we figure it out. Is that what we're hearing?
I mean, Lisa, what, I, I think we just implement a policy for shared parking on non-residential developments. I think it can just say that, because we'll work on what the policy is, which means it, you know, doesn't necessarily have to apply blanketly, we'll, we'll figure that out, but implement a policy for shared parking on non-residential developments. Because I think we have consensus that in some cases, we're going to want shared parking.
Do you think we're caught up on, and we need to, we don't have the policy, so we kind of need to develop the policy? Maybe that's the better, we want to develop a policy around shared parking, right?
I'd rather be clear that we intend to implement a policy, but...
Develop and implement?
Sure.
Okay. How we do this out here?
Yeah.
I think, Madam Mayor, we're just trying to keep your last full meeting as long as you, just hold on to it as long as you can.
Open mic night.
So just, we're trying to kind of make sure we understand here, because we do have a policy currently in the document, PTDM 3, that says, require shared parking. Are you directing us to revise this policy, or have a policy that states there will be a new policy developed?
Can someone else speak?
What, what page are you on?
Uh, sorry, this is page 134.
If I could, if I could interject here, I think what the council is saying is, they want to be involved in developing the policy for shared parking. Is that correct?
Before it is required, we want to work on developing it, and then...
We don't want a blanket requirement. We want to be able to, to determine what makes sense to have shared parking, and where.
The suggested language was develop and implement policies for shared parking for non-residential developments. Okay. And then the other part of that was remove unbundling for commercial leases. Are we in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't understand that, sitting here. Yes.
Did you want clarification, or you don't, you take...
I heard three Ss, and that, that one.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, though.
Is that, are we good on that piece too, Lisa and team?
Yes, that's clear.
For unbundling? Okay, great. Okay, any other further amendments that anyone would like considered this evening? Otherwise, we can go into closing comments?
I'd like to move to close the public hearing first, before we do that, if I can.
Sure. Is there a second?
There's no other comments around.
Madam Mayor, did you, do you think we've inserted the umbrella colors and the flexibility with bio retention ponds adequately?
I'm, I'm good with that. Did you want to seek clarification, Lisa?
Not on the umbrellas, but there are a couple of things that I think we want to bring up to make sure for the record that we are receiving all council direction on. Yeah. So those would be support for preserving ground floor commercial uses. This is attachment 10. I think we got clarification from the full council, that you want to go forward with that.
Yes.
The other question that we have is, I believe it's attachment, maybe it's attachment number nine. It has to do with the planning commission's recommendations, if the council is supporting, supportive of including those as well.
Jesus. Were those presented to us tonight, Lisa?
Yes, there was a slide on those, the PTC recommendations from November 3.
Can we pull up that slide, please?
Got it? There you go. No, it's the number 10 at the beginning.
Okay.
There it is. Yes.
Does staff have an opinion on these?
Yes, we are agreeable to making modifications and clarifying language, and that's provided in attachment nine, what our recommended wording would be. So these are slight amendments to the wording that's already in the plan. There was a request to provide regular, add something to the plan that would require some sort of program. This is number six here on the slide, for regular updates to finding, funding and financing strategies. But our staff in the finance department reminded me that this is something that's done as part of the CIP process and budget process anyway, so there's no need. But all of the other ones, we, we support, and there's, there's no different direction being added, it's just points of clarification and expansion on existing components.
Madam Mayor, if I may, what, what does number three, add policy to monitor equitable use of programs, like what, what is being, like, what would that look like?
Yes, so that was a comment made by one of the commissioners, which received support, and this has to do with our city programs, offerings, events. There is a, there is language in the plan that talks about making sure that we have programs, and we're creating a downtown that's inclusive and equitable to all users. So the question was, how do we know that we are? So we developed an expansion on that policy, and let me go ahead and, if you like, I can get that page from the document and let you know what we came up with on that one. Okay, so this is on packet page 738. It's the... the middle provides content already in the specific plan, and on the far right, the third column, the last column, is where staff is proposing recommendations that respond to the PTC's request. So this would be ensure that all city programs are designed, implemented, and evaluated in ways that promote fairness, remove barriers, and produce equitable outcomes for all residents. So it's just, it's a policy.
All right. And I see the new language about the aloney, what does it mean to embolden our discussion?
There was a request that we address, provide a little bit more description about the impacts to the, to the aloney peoples.
Of our downtown? Okay.
Not the impacts of the downtown, but just the impacts of colonization.
Okay.
And then there's one more, which was a request from council member Rack about adding an additional standard requirement that whenever a development proposal utilizes state density bonus to get an additional story, that additional story needs to be stepped back from the story below. I think you requested a blanket standard.
I did, but I think we sort of moved that to just the MU 40 when it was next to an RS district. So it would just be in limited scope with the RS district.
Sure.
And Adam, that step back is on the residential side, so it'd be in the back of the building?
So we have sort of MU 40 along parts of Laurel, right now, there's a six-foot step back for the third floor, and then it can go up to 50 feet, but with the density bonus could potentially go higher. So I was just suggesting, if they were going to go above our height maximums, that we would ask for additional and additional, because right now, it's like, third floor and then a straight building. And I'm just saying, if we end up having to get like six stories and someone's on the west side of Laurel, that they get a little more relief.
No, I get that, and, you know, to your, the point you made at the time, yeah, you know, if they have to spend a waiver on it, they have to spend a waiver on it, but step backs are usually from the frontage, so these...
We don't, I don't think we have front setbacks, step backs on Laurel. I think it's only for the, I think the step back is only on the backside.
We should be specific, yeah.
I'm only concerned about the rear setback.
And that's what I'm clarifying, yeah.
The rear setback on that, and I think it's only on what would be the west side of Laurel, in that sort of few block section.
Because I think classically, if we just say step back, that classically means from Laurel, so...
Laurel itself, I'm facing Laurel, I'm not concerned about, just the rear.
I support that for the rear setback, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I support that too for the step backs. Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Just in analyzing this document, I haven't seen a rear step back in any one of these properties. This would be the only rear step back that is present.
That is correct, because this zone is unique, because it is right adjacent to the backyards of single-family residences.
But aren't there other zones that are going to be?
Not in, not within the downtown specific plan boundaries, there is a segment that is adjacent to single-family residential, that is the MUN 40.
But we didn't do this, we've had this discussion before, it felt like, further down in like, south Laurel, and we don't have rear step backs there, correct?
I think this was, yes, I was looking for you, Rucha, I think this applies, you can go ahead and answer that.
There are rear setbacks all over the place in there.
Good evening, council members, Rucha Dandey. The step backs do apply for all the MUN 40 districts that are within the downtown specific plan and outside as well.
So outside of the downtown specific plan, we have rear step backs?
Yes.
Okay.
Along Laurel, yeah. I mean, for zones along Laurel, but the step backs are in the rear.
Sorry, it's not, it's not going to, it's all right.
Example, on Laurel Street, there are MUN 40 districts, which are dark purple in the zoning district. If a development wants to go in there, there is a step back requirement of six feet at 28 feet in the rear. When these, when these lots back up to single-family residential zoning districts, the step backs kick in, which are at six, which are six feet. These step backs are throughout for the MUN 40 districts, some, some zones are within the downtown specific plan area, and the remaining are outside, however, they all, these standards apply to all.
So how does what's being proposed compare to the standards that apply?
They would be an add-on to council member Dugan's point, I think the state law would have to be mentioned here, that when, when the state density bonus is, you know, an applicant requests for it under the state density bonus housing law, then any maximum heights beyond what is allowed in the zoning, in the underlying zoning, would need to apply the six-feet set back. So what I'm hearing is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, only, the council's direction is that this standard would only apply within the downtown specific plan, MUN 40 districts, but those will not be applicable to anything outside.
But is that setting us up for now the South Laurel residences being upset that the people in the downtown plan have this and they wouldn't?
I'm happy to relook at, at the rest of the MU 40 and 40 district throughout the city. Anything that's abutting residential if they're going over this, over the maximum heights?
Well, more to the point on...
We can tonight, because it's not being considered, so if we don't do it now, we're not going to be able to do it here.
But more to the point on state law, I'd be shocked if this doesn't flatly violate state law, actually, to have zoning that is conditional on someone using the bonus height. I can't imagine that that stands.
So then...
Great, do you have an opinion?
I'm just going to go back to my case-by-case analysis, I don't know what the development's going to be, so we might have an argument that, that the, an upper-four setback is allowed, as long as it doesn't affect the feasibility of the project, that's the general law on, on when people apply for density bonuses or exceptions or waivers and concessions.
Yeah, if it's allowed, I support it everywhere.
For tonight, is this something that we should write in, or is this something that we should pass separately, blanket across the city for MUN 40?
I don't think we can do it. Have to do it now for this one, and then look at the rest of it, because it's a specific plan?
I don't know, I don't know if what you're proposing is inconsistent with the plan, because it would be just a new regulation for this zoning district, and we would compare that to both the general plan and the specific plan. The general plan usually supersedes the specific plan in some instances, so I don't, I don't think you have to do it tonight, unless staff thinks that, that the language that we have would preclude us from regulating that at a future time, and I don't think, I don't think this plan does that, I think it's more of a general guidance on this, what the setback would be.
Yeah, my thinking, the way that I'm thinking about this, and this is something we all know very well, is any standard that you put in place, if a developer needs it to make their density work, they can ask for a waiver or concession, so you can certainly ask for it, and, and maybe it's some sort of, I think it's, depends upon how we approach it, if it's a blanket statement where we're signaling, you know, for anything beyond, above and beyond our height requirement, this is what we prefer. Maybe we can have some language in the plan that speaks to that, if the, if the council isn't ready to incorporate that into the specific plan tonight, but certainly, whether it's a specific plan or citywide through ODS, it would require an amendment to our ordinance, because that, this additional regulation is currently not in, wasn't factored into, or wasn't, it wasn't discussed as part of the objective design standard process.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I mean, the land use regulations in the specific plan just restate what's in the zoning districts, so if you want to defer that and look at, how you want to regulate this zoning district, we also have to look at, we do have to study this to make sure we're in compliance with the densities and everything else that apply, so, and we're going to do that also in conjunction, I mean, we're already going to study that, so...
Well, I guess the question is, we, I don't know if we will study it or not, so I would, I'm happy to drop it for this particular item, if the council is at least open to look at it across the board, it sounds like council member Dugan was okay with looking at that, so I think if we take that up separately citywide and take it, I just, what I would like, not like to do is just have it kind of go away, and then we never take it up again and look at it, so as long as there's agreement to, let's look at it within the next six months, and I think that's a reasonable alternative.
Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to look at it again, as long as we don't delay this process to our downtown specific plan.
Yeah, I support looking at it in all of our MU neighborhood districts that border residential, I think it's worth looking at through the whole city, so, yeah.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I think we have agreement to study it on a citywide basis.
Yep.
So we will put a pin in, we won't put it in the plan right now?
Correct.
Okay. And there's a request that this gets studied in the next six months, if, so, so that it doesn't get dropped. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. It can be studied, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, let's see, did we, were we good with the planning commission recommendations? I don't feel like we, there were some questions there, but we didn't...
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. I had one question. So there's one item, it's not listed, I think, kind of, Lisa, in this, in the slide deck, but it says, there's some stuff to the parking minimums that's replace PTDM with eliminate obstacles to development by removing unnecessary parking, so they kind of went with, we, I guess I, I, maybe I wouldn't want to do those two, since we've already taken commercial leases out, I just want to make sure sort of the council's will is considered for PTDM 5 and PTDM 7, which is on page 746 of the document.
Yes, so there was some redundancy about these policies, and so we, we modified them to streamline them, we agreed that there was some redundancy, and if the council would, wants to further direct, maybe you'll have to repeat that council member Rack, but it sounded like that there was additional comment on...
I guess I just want to make sure that we reflect the council's will to not have commercial leases unbundled, and so that's, that looks like what the, because what, it kind of doesn't talk about it in what the planning commission has recommended, so I just want to make sure we, what's accurately reflected.
We would modify any of these that are inconsistent with the direction that we received tonight, these would be modified.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, since we're talking about PTDM, PTDM 7, unbundle parking from, it says residential and commercial leases, and we should make sure it says market rate residential, because we've, as you said, we've been clear about keeping affordable housing bundled, but I don't know, it sounded like the planning commission requested some consolidation of those, and however that comes out of the hopper, that would be good. I want to commend the planning commission for taking so much time reviewing these, and I thought that they had some really good thorough feedback, there was some discussion on the technology, and the plan calls for free Wi-Fi, and they said, well, in 10 years, you know, Wi-Fi might not be the thing anymore, it might be something else, so let's remain flexible and the technology roll out, and I thought that was a really good comment, so I appreciated their, their feedback.
I'm good with the rest of their, I think their proposals.
Okay.
As long as we, kind of, the will of the council is clarified where it needs to be.
Right. Any other comments on the planning commission comments? Okay. Oh, Rucha has something.
Madam Mayor, I just looked at our downtown specific plan language and also the objective design standards, so going back to the six-feet step back above 28 feet for MUN 40 district, we already have language, if I may read it out, so if the building is five or more stories, the fifth story and above shall step back from the fourth story by at least another six feet. So I think that...
That would be in the front of the building, though, right?
The rear, in the rear of the building, yes. Does that suffice what your question is?
That's, but that's for, that's across the board, or that's, that's for the fifth story?
And above.
And above?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yes, and that is across the board.
But I still think we want to look citywide, because, or that's in the odds right now.
It is citywide.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I'm good with that, then.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Rucha, that was great.
Thank you. Bravo.
Thanks for your patience, we've kind of been doing a lot of work on different elements of planning recently, so, the good news is, it's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rucha.
John, did you have one more clarifying point?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just, do we need to reiterate the umbrella and the flexibility with bio-retention, or has that been clear and clarified with consensus?
I would, we can go back to the umbrella, should the council desire, but I have my notes, so I could, whatever you'd like to do, but the respect to flexibility of rain gardens, I think that needs to be addressed by our city engineer and Jim Stickley. So where would the council like to talk about first?
I'll clarify the umbrellas, and let's talk bio-retention, so the umbrellas, we're going to leave the city palette language, but we're intending to add colors complementary with the awning or business colors at the zoning administrator's discretion.
Got it.
That sounds good, and thank you, John.
Could you restate your question on the bio-retention?
I think we've, generally, as a council, have expressed a desire for us to be flexible with the bio-retention ponds, and I think that was heard, does that need to be stated in the plan to make it more actionable? Because I, you know, what I expressed was, they are optional, because we can put storm drains, and if we needed to, you know, eliminate one, for example, and I agree their aesthetic, I agree they signal good sustainability, they're not vital, as far as I'm aware, and so I think some acknowledgement that we're not looking to inhibit our commercial viability to have, you know, the latest and greatest-looking bio-retention ponds.
Grace Lee, city engineer, I do want to address the...
I do want to address the issue of the bioretention being optional. It is not actually optional. It is part of our C-3 regulation, which is for water quality per the water board. There is a requirement for certain sizing of the bioretention area for the water quality. So it isn't optional.
Well, is that if we do bioretention ponds, they have to meet that standard? Because clearly you can still build a street with storm drains, right?
Storm inlet itself does not allow for water quality. So the bioretention area is to hold the water and let the pollutants settle. So it's a water quality feature. Just having the water go into a storm drain inlet and out to the bay does not do that kind of treatment, water quality treatment. So this is called a low-impact development, LID. Bioretention is a form of LID. So it's required because we are replacing impervious surface. So any new or replaced impervious surface. So redoing the whole hardscape of the block is redoing impervious surface. So there's a really-- there's a calculation of a minimal sizing, a volume, that we need to treat. So it's not optional and there's certain size requirement.
So if I built a new street, I would have to have ponds next to it?
You would have to-- if you build a new street, you would have to have low-impact development, which could be on the side. You've seen it on the side. Even in San Carlos Avenue, we put it in ourselves as well. And that's so you can slow down, runoff, let it have a chance for pollutants to settle out before it goes into our storm drain system.
Okay. Well, I think the location, we do need to be flexible with. I acknowledge, you know, is a restaurant there today? Is it gonna be there in 10 years? It's, you know, this is a challenge. I would just say, I would-- if you can please email, I would say, the whole council, specifically what this requirement is because when these become known and they step on someone's outdoor dining, we're gonna be-- you know, that's gonna be an issue. It's really gonna be an issue. So I need to be able to point at, this is state law and, you know, we're being required to do it. So if you could please send that to me, I'd appreciate having that. And then I guess I'm not making any proposed change to the language.
Our Sustainability Management Analyst would like to share a couple considerations to the council as part of this discussion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So to the point of bioretention, I just want to add that with climate change, we'll have increased frequency of storms and also intensity of storms. So having bioretention ponds would really help enhance the resiliency of our downtown and minimize the risk of flooding. So I think it's just looking at the big picture, it will really help our downtown stay more vital and just more vibrant and not experience flooding events frequently. Thank you.
We'll send the restaurateurs to you as well. Thank you.
Any other final comments while we have the public comment open? Or Lisa, does staff have further requests for clarification?
I think we have everything.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Okay. Maybe we can do some final comments, reflections, if anybody has any that they would like to say overall. Go ahead, Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank all the public for all. As was pointed out, we've had so much public outreach in this for the last, gosh, many, many years of this. You know, we are at this point-- I would point out, we got to a point where we weren't sure that the downtown at the 700 block was gonna remain closed, but it stayed closed by a three-to-two vote. And I think all three of us are on the dais now, so thank you for that. And I appreciate all the support from staff and the hard work and the consultants. I mean, it's really, it's been, I think, a labor of love for so many people here and we're sort of at the finish line. So I'm excited to support this. I think this is a visionary plan for us and for the city. It's gonna be transformative to continue to make us sort of the jewel of the peninsula. And I look forward to everyone coming down to visit San Carlos and, you know, participating and being a part of this great downtown that we are creating. And so I just want to thank everyone for that and look forward to supporting it and seeing this vision be implemented and come to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Rack. Well said, and I agree, this is a heck of a plan. I really appreciate all the work from our community, from our staff, from our consultants. Really, really a deep, robust effort. You just, you know, if-- I'll just tell you, after sitting in literally-- you know, I was at the downtown advisory meetings as the year I was mayor and then I was on the subcommittee. I think I've literally been in 20-plus meetings about this plan. And, you know, there are-- it truly is visionary, lots of give and take. Not everyone's happy with everything, but it is a plan and it's a heck of a plan. And it really is gonna bring in the next phase of our great downtown. And it'll be work getting there, but I look forward to the effort. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Leighton?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank staff and everyone for this. As you can tell, tonight, things change often and getting everyone on the same page is a very difficult process in general. But I, you know, I just like to signal for everyone, this is a commitment from us as a council and a commitment from us as a city to continue to develop in for the next 10 to 20 years of what we want downtown to turn into and look to for it. I think the biggest thing that there will be changes, some of which I think are predictable, some of which are probably unpredictable at this point in time. I just hope we all commit to-- staff and council commit to what we've done tonight, which is continued to work on the plan through its implementations because, you know, plans on paper are one thing, but the devil's always in the details and trying to make them work to the best of what our goals and our guidance are. And hopefully we can do that. And I appreciate the path we've put ourselves on. I appreciate being able to be here tonight to put it over the finish line because I am coming in at the very end compared to everyone else. So I think you all should congratulate yourselves for the massive amounts of hard work that have been done and then the massive amounts of hard work we are putting on our shoulders in the future.
Thanks, Neil. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also excited to support this. It's been a long process. Some have faced it longer than others, but it has been a process. And thank you to staff for all your work and to the public for your engagement. This is probably the most talked about when I go out is, "When's that downtown?" So thank you to your community for supporting this. And it's a plan, but it's in the details, right? So I'm excited to get along and do some of the details.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. I too will add my thanks to staff. I mean, what an incredibly heavy lift and incredible effort. I mean, putting this on our strategic plan in 2021, it's almost five years later now at this point. This has been a long haul. I want to thank the Planning Commissioners. I want to thank our Downtown Advisory Commission and just all the people in the, you know, the 1,800 people on our email list and the people who filled out the surveys. It has been truly a collaborative effort. I don't think we possibly could have done more community outreach. So it is-- it's just been based on so much input that I really appreciate. For me, you know, I think our downtown is going to change no matter what. The buildings are older. The infrastructure is old and needs updates. But having a plan gives our community a say in how that change happens. And that's so important. And we want to have a say in what our downtown-- the future of our downtown looks like. And that's what this plan gives us, including, you know, modern upgrades and basic stuff like restrooms that was mentioned a dozen times in the 1,700-page community engagement document that was attached. So, you know, we want people to feel an emotional connection to our downtown, which I think this plan accomplishes. We want people to come and purchase their everyday commodities at Bianchini's but also shop at our specialty stores. We want to find that right mix. That's what we've been talking about a lot. And I think that the plan seeks to find that right balance. So I am so, so proud of this effort and I'm really looking forward to implementation as well. There's a great quote in the packet that was presented at one of the community outreach meetings a long time ago. And it's a quote and it says, "A city is not gauged by its length and width but by the broadness of its vision and the height of its dreams." And I think that this plan really embodies that. So I'm looking forward to taking the next steps as well. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025--
133.
A resolution of the City-- Council of the City of San Carlos approving the addendum to the 2045 General Plan Reset Environmental Impact Report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Vice Mayor Venkatesh? Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, we have four motions tonight, so we have a second one.
I'll do the second. I move to adopt Resolution 2025--
134.
134, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the addendum to the 2045 General Plan Reset Environmental Impact Report.
John just did that one. You're doing the next one.
Sorry. I read the whole thing. I move to adopt Resolution 2025--
134.
134, as a resolution of the City of San Carlos-- of the City of San Carlos amending the San Carlos General Plan, Land Use Map, Land Use Element and the Circulation and Scenic Highways Element.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Neil, you got this one.
I move to introduce ordinance number--
1632.
An ordinance of the City of San Carlos amending the San Carlos Zoning Map in Municipal Code, Title 18, Zoding Ordinance to codify the downtown specific plan.
Madam Mayor, just can I clarify, just for the record, I think this one is the one that you want to include, that you're not changing the MU 100 zoning for the Samtrans Building.
And I would like to amend that we will not be changing the MU 100 zoning regarding the Samtrans Building.
Second.
Okay, Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, move to introduce ordinance number--
1633.
An ordinance of the City of San Carlos adopting the San Carlos Downtown Specific Plan with-- do I need to add all the amendments in that?
Let me say the amendments is stated by staff?
Including all the amendments stated by staff.
And I will second. Crystal, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great work, everybody. Okay, that brings us to agenda setting. Anybody have any items for agenda setting this evening? I think we mentioned a lot already. Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.